Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. During the declared emergency in the city of Toronto, Committee of Adjustment virtual public hearings are being conducted by electronic means through WebEx, an online digital platform and streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel. These measures are necessary to comply with physical distancing requirements and in-person attendance limitations. This will be a virtual public hearing and participants who have registered in advance will be able to make their presentations to the committee using WebEx, an online event that is being moderated by city staff. Anyone wishing to view the hearing may do so by watching it on YouTube. Participants who have registered in advance will be connecting either by their computer, a phone or tablet app, or by telephone. All participants are automatically muted on entry. When your item is called, each participant will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. Only the committee members will be participating by video. Any registered participants will be participating by audio only. We ask that you also mute your devices until you are called on to speak. For all those who are waiting online, please ensure that you have called in with the phone number that you originally registered with. If you call in with a different number, you will not be able to speak on that item. To ensure audio clarity, I suggest that you do not use the speaker phone function on your telephones. We acknowledge that the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishna Bay, the Chipewa, the Hudnashoni, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, and Matisse peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto was covered by Treaty 13 with the Mississaugas of the Credit. In accordance with Sections 45 and 53 of the Planning Act 1990 as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the city of Toronto is called to order. My name is Alan Smithies and I will chair today's meeting. Joining us on the panel today are Ron Hunt, Asif Khan, Paul Kidd, and Adini Sankar Peralta. City staff are also present, Daniel Antonacci, Brendan Claph, Kelly Reid, Amir Nisan. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning bylaw that apply to property, permission to extend or alter lawful, non-conforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new lots. Anyone attending today who wants to receive a copy of the committee's decision must submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address because Committee of Adjustment and the T-Lab will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the committee's decision, it may be appealed to the Toronto local appeal body, T-Lab, or in some limited circumstances, to the local planning appeal tribunal, L-PAT. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the committee's decision. The hearing procedure is as follows. I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda. Where an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant will proceed with their presentation if desired. If the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the chair should they wish to speak on that item. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into the committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant or agent, is given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will comment when you are reaching the five-minute limit. When addressing the committee, please state clearly your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters described in the application. The applicant or agent proceeds first and will make their presentation to the committee. Please note that the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. To ensure that a revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice of the application are informed of the changes, the committee may decide to defer the application if it has been substantially revised. Then individuals either in support or opposed to the application are invited to speak. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have finished their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant or agent has an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the previous speakers. This marks the end of discussion on the item. The application is then taken into committee for a decision. Mr. Secretary Treasurer, I don't believe we have any minutes to confirm?
Correct, there's none.
Okay, thank you. And there are no files to close? Thank you. Are there any committee members here this morning who have a conflict of interest they'd like to declare? There being none, thank you very much. We'll now proceed to the first item on our list, that is, item number one, 387, 389, and 391 Broadway Avenue. I have one, two, three people registered to speak. And the first is the agent, Orion Cyrus. Are you there, sir?
Good morning. Yes, I am here.
Yes, thank you very much, sir. Before you start, I just wanted to ask, there's a number of staff reports on file with your application, one from City Planning dated the 14th of March 2021. They appear to have no objection to your application, subject to standard consent conditions. There's some standard forestry conditions, and there's also a development engineering report of the 31st of March, which also has no objections to your application, subject to the standard consent conditions. Sir, have you had the opportunity to read those reports?
Yes, I have. We have been in touch with city for a couple of months.
If you'd like to give, since we have other people on the speakers list, if you could give the committee a presentation on what you see as the merits of your proposal?
Good morning, everyone. In this proposal, we are requesting to combine three properties and divide them into four properties. The houses are relatively similar. The variances are standard variances, and they are very similar, so we made them standard, easier to make a decision. We have been in touch with city for months, close to a year. We have had many emails back and forth to make sure that we are responding to any and all concerns that come up from city people. And that goes for curb cuts, driveways, speed bump, hydro pole, traffic signs, and everything. So we revised it so many times to make sure that we are responding to all those considerations. If there is any question, I can answer.
Sir, I just wanted to ask, with respect to the, I noted that City Planning had indicated that they considered the proposed lot size as consistent with the neighborhood. Did you do a lot study in connection with your particular proposal, and what did you find?
I lived in the neighborhood for five years, and my own house was smaller than the proposed ones. But we are proposing to go a bit less than 25 feet. And 25 feet is very common in the neighborhood. If we go to east and west of Broadway, there are so many cases very similar and much smaller than this proposed lots. South of these houses, there are a row of semi-detached houses with 17 feet frontage. So again, we are not even, like, we are detached houses, they are semi-detached. The coverage that they are having right now is much higher than ours. We are asking for 3% extra coverage over zoning. And they have, if I'm not mistaken, close to 45% for semi-detached houses. So to my opinion, it's very, it works with the neighborhood. And these cases exist throughout the neighborhoods, south and northly side.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, we'll go to our next person on the list. I have Jesper Toft and Farzi Pormatamed. I'm sure I've not pronounced that correctly. Are either one of those persons there?
Yes, we are here.
Yes, can I get your full name and address, please?
Yes, Jesper Toft, it's J-E-S-P-E-R-T-H-O-F-T. I'm at 390, or we are at 390 Broadway, which is immediate across from the proposed development.
Okay, thank you, sir. If you'd like to give us your thoughts on this application?
Yeah, I wanted to comment on the previous discussion on lot size and just point out that I'm not aware of any other detached houses of the size of 25 feet on Broadway. There are further west, I think, there are semis or potentially townhouses, but this would be unusually small for the street. That's really my only comment on that. I don't necessarily object to it as such, but I think it's fair to say that this would be the smallest lots for detached houses on Broadway. My second, so yeah, I have three comments, and I'm just going to go through them, I guess.
Yes, sir, you have, if you'd like to go through, you still have a number of minutes left if you'd like to finish your presentation.
Yeah, so, yes, the second comment I have, more important to me is, is the, on the site plan, I noticed that the four proposed houses seems to be staggered, meaning they have different setback. House A is listed as a setback of, I think, close to 4.5 meters, and House D is six meters. I believe that's a variance, and I don't understand why that has not been called out as a variance. I think in this neighborhood, we have a standard of six meters, and there are numerous new houses that have been built recently in the neighborhood, and they have all been consistently set back by about six meters. And this, in fact, I was also working with the group that discussed the planning of the Whole Foods supermarket close to us, and a major point that was actually a win for our group was that the Whole Foods supermarket should also be set back. I don't think they got the full six meters, but they were moving it back compared to what they proposed. My point is, it would look much nicer on the street if all houses are set back the same amount, and that seems to be the precedence on all construction. So I'm not sure why these have been staggered. My final point is the move of the speed bump, where it appears that that speed bump will now be very close, again, on the same site plan, and proposed speed bump will be very close to my curb, which means that I would be essentially reversing right into a speed bump when I go out of my driveway. So as it is now, it is a few meters away from my opening, and I don't know what the rules from transportation services are on speed bump placement, but it seems to be difficult to get this into the plan. I'm not sure I can talk to what is the better option, but I clearly do not like to have a speed bump so close to my driveway. That was the three points that I have.
Okay, thank you, sir. I just wanted to ask, did you have the opportunity to look at the committee file? There is a report from Development Engineering, sir, that says that the applicant would be responsible for relocating a speed hump. So they'd be responsible for costs?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, I have, our next speaker is a Farzi Pormatamed. I'm sure I've pronounced that. Are you there?
Mr. Chair, I think we're moving on to a Lori Sims.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, oh.
I'll go to a Lori Sims. Are you there?
Yes, but I don't have any question.
Yes, thank you, madam. Can I get your full name and address, please?
Lori Sims, 706 1818 Bayview Avenue.
Okay, if you'd like to give us your thoughts on this application?
Well, I mean, just generally, there seems to be a lot of construction going on in the neighborhood and in many places, and I am just a concerned neighbor. One of my concerns is height and density in this area.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Which density is increasing, yeah.
Okay, can I ask, whereabouts are you on Bayview Avenue?
In the condo building, would be south of Broadway.
Okay, thank you. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, we'll go back to the agent, Orion Cyrus. Are you there? Mr. Cyrus, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Yes, you've heard the comments from the previous speakers, if you'd like to reply to them?
Sure. The first speaker spoke about frontage, but as I mentioned, there are so many cases. If we go further to the west, there are a row of houses, if we come from Mount Pleasant to two streets east of Mount Pleasant. So many semi-detached houses and detached houses with much smaller frontage. Even the houses south of these properties are with something like 20 feet frontage, and they are, I'd say, eight of them, or more. 10, 12 of them exactly south of this property. So it's not, I wouldn't say it's uncommon. In terms of setback, we stay with what is required by zoning, so I have no comment. Whatever city asks us to do, we'll do. And obviously, you know that it's the average of the setbacks from the neighbors. So we stay with whatever city asks us to do. That's why it's not a variance. The speed bump, we have been in discussion with city, and this is what we have received from city. And I'm not in a position to move that speed hump to anywhere else if that is preferred by city. Speaker two spoke about height. We are staying with 10 meters maximum height that city requires. The variance that we have is for old bylaw, as you know. So we are just moving the mid of the roof. And density, as I mentioned, we are only going 3% up. If this was, like, divided into 10 houses or two houses, the density still is 38% of the lot area, the whole lot area, so it wouldn't change. And that's, and if the committee thinks that we have to change this, any of the variances, we have no issue changing them. But I thought they are very standard and in line with other variances that have been requested so far and in other houses in the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To the applicant, I'm just a little confused as to why you said that you're not allowed to move the speed bump, and yet one of the speakers said that the existing speed bump was away from his driveway, and now it's being relocated in front of his driveway. Can you just clarify that for me?
Sure, sure. The location of speed bump obviously should be between the curb cuts, south and north. Because we are now having four houses, so we are moving the curb cuts. It was closer to someone else's driveway, now it goes to somewhere else, but it has a lot of requirements. It must be placed so that it has no conflict with anyone's driveway. It should work with the hydro poles, with traffic signs, and it shouldn't be too close to the intersection. And that's why this is the location that we got from city. It's not like anywhere else we move it, it's going to be in confliction with someone's driveway, at least.
Sir, can I ask, what you're telling the committee doesn't jive with what's in the development engineering report? Because they're indicating that the speed hump can be moved, there's a cost associated with it, as well as the passing of a road alteration bylaw. Have you looked at that report?
Yes, yes, we have been in touch with city.
There's nothing in there that suggests that it can't relocate a speed hump?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I wasn't probably clear. We are relocating the speed hump from the current location to a couple of meters to the east, and that is the location that we cannot change. So we cannot change it from that proposed location. So we are showing it on our site plan. If we move it too far to the east or west, then it's not working for transportation. So they wouldn't allow us to move it too far from the current location. That gray area is the current location, and that hashed area is the proposed location of the speed hump. What I was saying is that we cannot move it from the proposed location. The current location obviously does not work because it's in confliction with or one of the house's driveway.
Okay, thank you. Does the committee have any further questions of the speaker? Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm continuing to have problems with the notion that to accommodate your application, you have to move a speed bump, which appears to be probably 20 feet, I'm going to say, and then to compromise the egress and ingress of an existing neighbor. Is there any possibility that that speed bump can be modified again so that it doesn't interfere with what you're applying for and the neighbor that spoke about his concerns?
Maybe I should put it this way. We have no preference of where that speed hump should be. It's the transportation requirements. If they let us move it to anywhere else, we would. And if the committee would like to put a condition saying that you have to comply with transportation requirements, conditions, I mean, you will put this condition anyway, we will comply. It doesn't matter where the speed hump going for us. So we will comply with whatever the transportation require us to do. And if you would like to include that neighbor so that they have a say, I mean, for sure, it makes no difference for us.
I wanted to ask, sir, is that proposed speed hump location, is it directly in front of the neighbor's driveway?
No, it cannot be directly in front of it. It's sitting beside it, and there are some clearances that the transportation wants, and we are complying with those. But even if transportation, after a second thought, they decide to move it to anywhere else, it's on all costs, we have to pay for it, and we will move it to wherever transportation require us to do.
Yeah, so there is, there's still some opportunity there to make some movement within that envelope that you've shown on the drawing, correct?
Yes, there is.
Thank you. Does the committee have any further questions of the speaker? There being none, could I get a motion on this application, please? Ms. Sankar?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. You know, looking at the various parts and the actual consent of this application, I do believe that it's minor from my review and that it fits with the neighborhood. I am concerned about the speed bump. And before making any decisions, I just wanted to ask, are we allowed to put any conditions? I don't know if the Deputy Secretary Treasurer and team there allows us to put specific conditions on what we would like to have happen between the transactions of the applicant and Ministry of Transport. Is that permitted?
Ms. Sankar, the actual condition is described in the development engineering report, so it just indicates that it would be to the satisfaction of transportation services. The location of these things isn't carved in stone. So the fact of the matter is that it can be negotiated between the agent and transportation service. They just have to pass the road alteration bylaw that indicates where that speed hump is going. So as I indicated, there's already room within that envelope that they've shown on the drawing to move that, to shift it either east or west of the location. So that's something that they'll work out with transportation services.
So can I make that a condition, that they work? I'm just asking because I want to make sure that this is something that says that they can work with transportation on redirecting that speed bump to the satisfaction that it doesn't block the driveway of any other of the neighbors that are there, that it's placed in a position that would not affect or make worse any of the other neighbors?
And that's something that they'll work out with transportation services, but they're not, they won't put it in front of somebody's driveway and block access to their driveway.
All right, so with that in mind, I'll motion then to approve this application. I'll make it subject to the engineering reports, forestry, and to put in that caveat that this applicant will work with transportation to ensure that that bump is properly placed, that it does not affect the driveways of any of the neighbors.
Just a moment, Ms. Sankar, the Deputy Secretary Treasurer has a comment.
Mr. Chair, the condition for transportation is all you need to put in as a condition, because that takes care of it.
Okay, then I will make it subject to transport. It's just that I was hearing him say that it depends on where transport puts it, but Mr. Chair says that they will never place it directly in front of someone's driveway. And so with-
Just if it gives you any more comfort, Ms. Sankar, the location of the speed hump has to go to community council. So if community council doesn't approve the location, then it's not going to go. So obviously, there's the opportunity to debate its location when the bylaw comes before community council.
Okay, that makes me feel a lot better. So my motion stands with all of those conditions. That is, the staff report of March 14th, the engineering report, and subject to transport and forestry.
Thank you, Ms. Sankar. Someone to second that motion? Mr. Hunt seconds. All those in favor? The motion carries unanimously. Sir, your application's been unanimously approved, subject to city planning, urban forestry, and development engineering conditions. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you so much.
We're now on item number two, one, three, and seven Saginaw Avenue. I have one, five people registered to speak. The agent is Jim Pfeffer. Are you there, sir?
I certainly am.
Yes, Mr. Pfeffer, can I get your full name and address, please?
Yeah, I'm Jim Pfeffer of Three Bridgman Avenue, Toronto, Ontario.
Okay, thank you, sir. Just, I'm going to start here because there are a lot of con- Just, I'm going to start here because there are a lot of comments on this application and some of them are very complex. We have a rec, a report from Urban Forestry recommending refusal due to the potential negative impact on four private walnut trees. Now, we have recommended conditions from Heritage Planning dated the 22nd of March. We have a 22nd of April report from Development Engineering, which has no objection, subject to their standard consent conditions. There's a report from the 24th of March from Ravine and Natural Features Protection. No objection to the consent, but objection to the proposed length and depth variances for one Saginay. Objection to the proposed length and depth variances plus the rear yard setback variance for three Saginay. Because they will allow construction within the minimum tree protection zone of healthy protected trees. And they're indicating the applicant must revise the plans by eliminating or reducing the proposed disturbance within the tree protection zone to the satisfaction of Ravine and Natural Features Protection. Then we have a very lengthy report from City Planning dated the 14th of March that has no objection to the proposed consent. But they have a number of recommended modifications to the variances. I'm not going to go through them in detail because it's extremely lengthy. And also with respect, that was variance number three. Variance, pardon me, application number three with respect to numbers of seven variances. There's also a host of recommend, recommended modifications. I'm just asking, sir, in view of all these recommended modifications, does this result in a substantial redesign of your project? And just before that, you answer, have you had the opportunity to re, to review these, these reports?
You mentioned a forestry reports that mentioned some walnut trees and that is not on the Application Information Centre. There's no, there, I've seen the ravine reports, but there is no forestry report on the AIC and I, I haven't seen that report. I would say in terms of the staff report, this, the, there are plans and elevations attached to that staff report which reflect the changes that staff is requesting. So the committee has before it plans which reflect those changes, which were of course prepared to accept. And will also make the changes here on the floor today, which are going to protect those trees that ravines had a concern with. So that having been said, basically we're meeting, you know, I think it was basically ravines and staff that had those concerns. And we are addressing those concerns, except for the one concern staff had about the three story on one Saginay. We're still asking for that for reasons I'll explain.
Okay, well, just a moment. With, with respect to that report, you said you hadn't seen about the four walnut trees. That's in the report of the 18th of May from, from Tree Protection and Plan Review. Did, and have you seen that report?
Yeah, there is a report online from the 18th of May. And it's, it basically mentions that there's the, that objection on three Saginay. But there's no mention of any walnut trees and anything that's, that's available on the website. I, I've looked at all of these.
It's on, it's on page two of that report of the 18th of May.
Hold on for one sec.
Okay, it's up on the screen now.
Oh, hold on.
Okay, well, you know what I'm going to do, so I'm just going to park this issue of the tree for now. If you're proposing to make changes to your application, then can you please tell the committee what your changes are?
Yeah, these, these changes come straight from the staff report, except for two, which I'm increasing the change to address the concerns of ravines.
Okay.
So for three.
Okay, sir.
For three, yep.
Can you go through your, are you proposing to make changes to your application to reflect city planning's modifications?
Yes, so from the staff report on three Saginay Avenue.
Okay, okay.
Variance number.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Start from the beginning, which, which, which application, which, which variance are you proposing to change?
So for three Saginay Avenue, we are eliminating variance number four.
Chairman, can you, Jim, can you please tell us the file number that you're changing?
Yeah, certainly. This is A 0101 slash 21, A 0101 20 slash 21 North York. So that's for three Saginay. Yeah, this is the one. So we are eliminating variance number four for the driveway width. We're eliminating variance number six for the number of platforms. We're eliminating variance number seven for the area of the second story rear platform. We're eliminating variance number eight for the rear yard setback. Variance number nine, we're modifying. So the height we're requesting is now 10.5 meters instead of 10.83 meters. We're eliminating variance number 10 for the number of stories. We're eliminating variance number 11 for the width of the dormers. We are modifying variance number 12 for the length. And we're modifying this more than city staff had requested to address the concerns of ravines. So that length will be 23.87 meters.
So variance number 12 for the proposed building length, which you currently have is 28.74 meters. You're reducing it down to how much?
Uh, 23.87.
23.87?
Correct. And that will take it out of the tree protection zone of the trees mentioned in the ravine report.
Okay.
Uh, variance number 13 is the other side of the length going, it's depth. And so we're reducing that from 27.6 meters to 21.76 meters. So the new number is 20.
How much?
21.76.
Okay. All right, what's the next one?
We're eliminating variance number 14 for the skylight projection.
Okay.
And variances 18 and 19 are both basically the height rule under the old by law. And we're reducing that from 9.78 to 9.65 meters.
Okay.
So that's the changes we're making to three Saginay, eliminating a good number of variances. One Saginay, we also agreed to make some changes with city planning.
Okay, now what, what are the changes with one Saginay? Are, are they the same?
One Saginay, and that, that's file number A 013, Brendan, I guess. And that's, we're reducing the height, that's variance number four.
Hang on just a minute, hang on just a minute.
Okay.
You have to understand that these are a lot of changes and we're trying to keep track of them here, so just a moment.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, seven Saginay, which variances are you changing?
Not, not seven, but number one Saginay, which is A 013. Seven Saginay is just the existing house to remain essentially, we're building a new garage. So one Saginay, and that is the, what, what's presented here. Number four, the height is being reduced from 11.58 meters to 11 meters.
One Saginay. It was, I'm, can you start over, one Saginay, what was?
Yeah, one, one Saginay, variance number four for height is being reduced. We're no longer asking for 11.58 meters, but we're asking for 11 meters.
Okay. That's height.
And then we're, yeah, we're eliminating variance number 12 for the rear enroaching platform. Variance number 12 is being eliminated. And variance number 13 was also the rear non-enroaching platform and that variance.
Variance number.
Well.
Variance 12 is eliminated, what's the next one that's changed?
Variance number 13 is also eliminated.
Okay.
So those are the changes that we're making and those changes address the concerns of planning and of ravines. So the only outstanding concern then.
Okay, hang on just a second. With respect to ver, number seven Saginay, are you, are you making changes to that one as well?
Uh, there were no concerns and we're making no changes, no changes to seven Saginay.
Okay, because with, planning was recommending modifications to number seven.
Uh.
Variance number four for the building height, eliminating variance 12 for the north side yard setback and eliminating variance 13 for the south side yard setback. And they also recommended refusing variance number five for the proposed number of stories.
I think you're referring to one Saginay, that's one, not seven Saginay that you're referring to. We're not, seven Saginay, we're just building a garage.
Let me just find the report here.
Mr. Chair, whenever you're ready, I do have a question before we even proceed or think proceeding.
Please, Ms. Senkar, my apologies, it's a very difficult application to follow.
I, I followed it quite well in terms of the changes that he's made and I've captured all of that. But I mean, before he even proceeds, um, sir, you know, you've made quite a lot of changes here on the spot, which is, is, is already tough and it's changing an application quite a bit. You're saying that it's to meet staff report, but we've got so many other reports in here. And I, I understand that there's also a Mr. David Bostock, who is from Forestry on, on the call, or hopefully he is on the call to talk about that those, you know, the forestry matters. I mean, you might have met Ravine, but you haven't met also Forestry, which is very different. And what really also concerns me is the heritage report. The heritage report nobody's mentioning is from March 22nd. And that's, that's pretty detailed, saying that it identifies that any soil disturbance activities with the redevelopment of this property has the potential of impacting archaeological resources. As such, an archaeological assessment is required to be undertaken. And, you know, we don't know what the basis is of, of that. I, I'm of the opinion that there are so many influences here. Would you not rather defer this application in order to address all of these open areas? I mean, I don't want to flat out deny it, but when I get something like heritage that's telling me, you know, we're, we're not willing to move forward unless this is done. And if that's not done, you know, I'm very, very concerned about this. So is that not something you'd like to do? And we've got five people waiting who probably have similar concerns. I'm not going to guess that, but before moving it to the depth of going through this application, is that something you might consider deferring?
Um, the, the heritage application simply says when excavation takes place, it has to be done. You know, you have to do this, this thing. And that's going to be, that condition will always be there. You know, there's nothing we can do to get rid of that, that condition. As a matter of fact, you should be happy that that condition is there with an application before the Committee of Adjustment. So that can be made a condition, because otherwise someone can simply build as of right here without satisfying any sort of heritage application. That's, it's, this area is an area of archaeological interest. And it's, that kind of study is going to be required for any work in that area. You know, whether we go forward or not. That condition is not going to be removed with any further work. Similarly, with Transportation Services, this lot is a very unique condition. So Transportation Services has a lot of conditions, but they don't have any objections.
Sir, sir.
And those conditions.
Sir.
Yeah.
Do you want to defer or not?
No.
You want, you want to proceed, okay? You, you'll proceed. We've already, you know, you've gone through the modifications you want to make. Make your, make your presentation as to why you think this is an appropriate use of the land and we'll take it from there, okay?
Okay, as this is for applications, and it is, there are some complexities here. I'm going to take longer than that five minutes, I'll try and keep it within.
You have five minutes, sir.
This is for applications, sir, and it is a complex application. So, you know, as you're aware.
That's it, so get going.
Can I see the page two of the presentation booklet, please? So, page two, please. So this is five different lots of record that exist right now. This consent proposal is to take these five different lots of record, four of which have street frontage, and change them into three new lots, all of which will comply with frontage and area standards in the bylaw. You can see on this pa, you can see on page two, please, the tree protection zones of those trees that, um, page, page two. The prior page. What's, yeah, thank you very much. So you can see there's five different, five different lots of record. We're changing it to three different lot, three lots of record, the existing house, seven Saginay is to remain, there's two new houses. Those four different lots originally had houses on them. You can see in the inset, in the upper right-hand corner, there's one of those lots at Otter Crescent, that's 280 feet deep. So we're a considerable distance from that lot. Similarly, on Coldstream, those lots are 200 or 220 feet deep, we're a considerable distance from them. If you go to the next page, you'll see the map of the neighborhood. You can see how this lot is very isolated from the other lots behind on Otter Crescent, those 200 feet deep lots on Coldstream. In this area, you can see a lot of these houses do have reduced side yard setbacks. There's a number of houses in this map that have 1.2 or less side yard setbacks recently approved by the Committee of Adjustments and others with three stories recently approved by the Committee of Adjustment. On the next page, you can see an aerial photo and you can see the ravine behind the lot, which does not contain a water course. And you can see that it creates a substantial distance between it and the properties, both to the east on Otter Crescent and to the south at Coldstream. This lot is very unique in this neighborhood. And that is why it's an appropriate lot for the houses that my client has chosen to design. You can see those houses on the next two pages. The next page is three Saginay, the front elevation, those dormers are decorative dormers. Um, and there's no third story in that house. The next page, you can see the site plan. We've reduced the length of this building to get out of the way of those trees that ravines has an interest in protecting. On the next page, you can see the site plan for one Saginay. And you can see that although this house is set back on the lot and it's a big house, the coverage we're asking for isn't out of line with what's been approved in the neighborhood. You can see there's still a lot of open space on the lot, there's a lot of green space on the lot. And you can see the rendering on the next page, you can see those three dormers which look into the third story. There's a number of three-story houses in this neighborhood. Those dormers are fairly modest, they don't create an imposing appearance to the building. They're very similar to other houses in the neighborhood that have third stories can pay, enclosed within a third, enclosed within the third story roof. And on the next page, you can see on all sides of the building, the dormers that look into that roof are of a modest size. There's one balcony at the back, it's set within the roof, so there's no overlook concerns to the side or to the rear, as I'll discuss later. That balcony is a building code requirement. On the next page, you can see some of the trees on the lot. All of the trees in these photos will remain. When this project is complete, there will be 51 trees. there will be 51 trees of protected size on these lots and in the boulevard immediately in front of it. And I have to say that this property, when developed, will have, will be making as great a contribution to the canopy. Uh, yeah, certainly. Just to address the forestry issues, if you could scroll down two pages. Uh, and I'll save the-
Your five minutes.
Yeah. These property, these, this property is unique in the neighborhood. What we're proposing is appropriate for a lot of this size that's isolated in the manner it is. And there is no negative impact to the variances that we're requesting. The variances we're requesting are in keeping with the bylaw intent and the OP intent. Thank you.
Go to our next, uh, does the committee have any questions of the speaker?
Yeah, Mr. Khan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Fiver, I have heard you and I understand that you have reduced or modified or eliminated in three Saginaw. Sir, my question is only a simple question about one Saginaw. Staff has recommended variance number five. Number of stories to be refused. Would you be kind enough to say something about it?
Yeah, I certainly would. Um, if you take a look at the second last page of the booklet, you can see a number of three-story buildings, uh, in the neighborhoods. You can see that there are three-story buildings that I'm aware of in the immediate vicinity at both 11 and 22 Frontenac. Uh, 117, 179, 181 Caribou, 221 and 452 Coldstream, 100 Otter Crescent, five Stormont, three Glen Willow Place. And you can see pictures of some of these buildings. As with these buildings, our third story is entirely enclosed within that sloping roof. Uh, 22 Frontenac that you see here actually has a much bigger side dormer than what we're proposing. And just like 22 Frontenac, the family we're building for has a very large family. They have a lot of children. This is an Orthodox community. Houses having this third story within the attic to can, to enclose basically a large number of bedrooms to incorporate a large family. It's a very common feature in this neighborhood. You see it in a lot of houses. There's three houses in a row that you can see on Caribou further down Caribou. There's another three houses in a row. Exactly the same, third story within, uh, you know, entirely within the roof line. And that's what we're doing. There's no impact to what we're asking because we're just such a great distance from any other houses and we're at this little cul-de-sac. So I think it's entirely appropriate in this case that our client has chosen a lot for his house, which is appropriate for what he's trying to build.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, we'll just take a break for two minutes. I'll be back. Thank you very much. Brendan, can we start up again? Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, committee's back in session. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, we are, does the committee have any further questions of the speaker? Mr. Kidd?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I'd just like to ask the applicant, with the revisions that you've made to the building lengths on, uh, uh, number three, does that satisfy the con- uh, uh, the concerns of the forestry and ravine with respect to the, uh, I guess there was four trees that they were concerned about having to remove?
Okay, Mr. Kidd. Uh, yeah, on three Saginaw, absolutely. And if you take a look at, um, I guess it's the second page where I had that diagram of the lots. Uh, there's the two trees that were in the refer, the ravine report, uh, that were referred to. Those trees are marked and their tree protection zone is marked. So there you see the original footprint of the building, but called, that we were asking for, but there, I've got the depth to the tree protection zone called out of 21.76 meters. That's what I modified my variance to. The length, the front yard setback to the tree protection zone is 22.10 meters. In my variance request, I made that, uh, 23.87 because we're asking for that 1.77 meter front yard setback variance. But it's really depth from the front yard setback that regulates how far back a building can go in the lot. So that line that we're asking for, for the depth, doesn't impact those tree protection zones. So that addresses that ravine concern. Similarly, we eliminated the variance for the rear yard setback, uh, which is a variance that planning didn't have a concern with, ravines did. So we eliminated that variance. Um, in terms of these forestry trees, you know, so the ravine thing on three Saginaw, absolutely, that's been addressed by those changes. Um, I took a look during the break for this forestry report to refer to these walnut trees and I tell you, it is not on the website. I did have some discussions with David Bostock at Forestry, although I had kind of assumed the fact that, you know, a report had not appeared on the website, that he hadn't had any concerns. What I will tell you is that this lot has been used as a private side yard, basically, for 40 years. And as a consequence of that, you know, a number of matured trees have developed. Uh, and when you build new houses, you know, some of those trees are going to go. There will be a significant canopy on these properties after development. Um, uh, and I believe it, Mr. Bostock, and he'll speak to this, I guess, if he is a speaker. I think it, he sees it as his, you know, job to inform the committee when viable trees are going to be impacted. They certainly will here, but it's not inappropriate. Mr. Bostock told me he had concerns that this consent is creating bigger lots that are going to allow for these bigger houses. We confirmed with Toronto Buildings and with City Legal, so we've really done our homework here, that these lots could be built on in combination without a consent. So you can see we've got different shadings for these five different existing lots of record. You take, so those two kind of leftmost lots, the existing one and the existing three Saginaw. We could today, without getting a consent, file a building permit application for a very large house on one, three Saginaw and that property to the rear. So we would have a really large lot to build on. And we could do that without a consent because those are existing lots of record, privately deeded, separately deeded. And buildings and legal have confirmed that. So that's another, you know, you don't have a report from them, but we've really done our homework and tried to investigate properly all of the ramifications on this. Uh, there are some trees that are, yeah, that's the, thank you, Mr. Kidd.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Kidd, um-
Thank you.
And the other, and, uh, other committee members, I just let, just to let you know, we have uh, David Bostock, the supervisor from the C- uh, City of Toronto Forestry. He's on the line. If you'd, if you'd like to hear from him, if that would provide some clarification, I'll just ask Mr. Bostock to comment on the tree issue. Would that be appropriate for the committee?
Please.
Mr. David Bostock, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Bostock, I can hear you. If you could just identify yourself, please?
Sure. My name is David Bostock and I'm the supervisor of the Tree Protection and Plan Review Group with North York.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, you've heard the comments from Mr. Pfeffer concerning this consent and minor variance application. You're aware he's made some changes to, uh, specifically variance number three, which is for three Saginaw. He's made changes to variances number 12 and 13, which, uh, relate to the building length. And that is he's reduced it from 28.74 meters to 23.87. And I just wanted to, does that, does that give, uh, forestry any comfort with respect to tree protection?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I'm unable unfortunately to speak to matters pertaining to ravines. Um, so Ravina Natural Features has written their, uh, own memo. Um, as you can see from the, um, very well presented, uh, plan that Mr. Pfeffer, uh, provided, I believe it was on page two of his document. The Ravina Natural Feature Protection, um, limit extends, um, more into the sort of building area, the built, proposed built area of number, of the proposed three Saginaw, uh, than it, than it does into number one. So TPPR's concerns relate to trees at the rear of the proposed number one and RNFP's concerns, as I understand it, relate to trees at the rear of the proposed number three. So I can't comment as to whether, uh, the ravine group would be satisfied with the changes that have been proposed for number three. I'm more than happy to answer any, any specific questions, uh, from, uh, from the panel. Um, uh, beyond that, I, I, you know, I, I think, um, I do believe that the, the memo, the standalone memo that we provided, I, I'm on the same page as, as Mr. Pfeffer. It doesn't appear to be uploaded to the, the public portal. You did put a screenshot of our standalone memo for this consent proposal, uh, up on the, the screen. That is the memo that we submitted, but I, I don't, uh, I haven't seen it, uh, on the portal.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bostock. I'll just ask the committee if it has any questions. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none. Now, thank you very much, Mr. Bostock. Uh, we'll go to then our next speaker on the list. I have a John Tiolas. Are you there, sir?
Uh, Mr. Chair, we're attempting to reach out to Mr. John Tiolas. We haven't had any, any success yet.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Clapp. I'll go to the next person on the list. I have a Nancy Krytoru, and I probably pronounced that incorrectly, but, uh, madam, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Madam, can I get your full name and address, please?
Nancy Krytoro, 145 Coldstream Avenue.
Okay, thank you. If you'd like to give us your thoughts on this application?
Uh, yeah, sure. Well, I submitted my comments. Basically, I have, uh, four points. Number one was the timing. We didn't get very much notice. Um, as, uh, as potential consultants or, or impacted neighbors. So, uh, that's, that's a concern, uh, to, to be honest. Uh, the second issue is the variances. The, this, they, they're requesting 42 variances. Um, I can understand if you request one or two or three or four variances. But when you're requesting 42 variances, it's my opinion, and I think it's the opinion of many others, that perhaps the committee should be asked to review their bylaws altogether. If you're gonna allow 42 variances to go through, then it makes a joke out of, uh, the Planning Act, uh, completely. So, uh, right off the bat, I don't have the expertise or the knowledge to deal with each one of those variances. But it says, it speaks to, uh, complete disregard for, um, you know, for, for the law completely. Uh, regarding trees, my property backs onto lot five and six on one, the proposed development of one Saginaw. And I'm very concerned that some of those big trees, I attached two pictures with my application. Some of those big trees are gonna come down and it's gonna seriously affect the water and the flooding in our backyard, as well as the overall look and feel of the neighborhood. We've had those trees. We've been living here for over 30 years. We've always had those trees in the back and we do get flooding from time to time. And if those trees gone, it will, it will further reduce, uh, will, it will further increase the flooding in our backyard and make our backyard-
If I may, I don't mean to interrupt, but I just, the Committee of Adjustment doesn't deal with drainage issues. That's dealt with through the, uh, site planning process. If the, if this application is approved, the applicant has to submit a lot drainage plan that shows that all his stormwater is managed on his own property. That's a condition of approval of his building permit.
Okay, well, that's too bad, but this committee should be dealing with it. But in any event, and then the last thing is, they're asking for depth of a building that's gonna be 90% greater than the allowed depth. And that is, can, as far as I'm concerned, a complete abuse of, of the law. They've pushed that house at one, uh, Saginaw all the way to the back of that lot. And, um, it, 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 it's going to completely encroach on our property and our neighbor John Tiolas's property. So, and, and the three stories, I, I've heard the developers say that there are lots of three-story buildings in the neighborhood, but there certainly aren't any on our street, on the Coldstream, that, that, that's here currently that backs onto that, that ravine area and that lot. And, um, it's just gonna, it's gonna feel like having an apartment behind our, our house. And it's, it's really an abuse, I think, of the variances. Thank you.
Okay, madam, I just wanted to ask, did you have an opportunity to read the city planning report that's in, in the committee's material on file? Which was dated the 14th- planning report that's in, in the committee's material on file, which was dated the fourteenth of March?
No, I didn't. I don't think I ever got a copy of that report. I just got the material that you sent me in the mail.
Okay, thank you. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, I'll go to the next person on the list. I have E.L. Perelman or Joy Stewart. Are you there?
Hi, yes, Joy Stewart.
Yes, Solo, can I get your full name and address, please?
My name is Joy Stewart. I'm the owner of fifty-seven Otter Crescent.
Okay, if you could give us your thoughts on this application?
Sure. So, so our property backs on to the proposed development. This area is, it's home to a fairly complex ecosystem with a lot of trees, a ravine, a creek. The proposed build is at the top of the hill, which is at the back of our property. We are concerned, you know, that area is somewhat forested. We're concerned about privacy, having a, a three-story building sitting at the top of the hill, looking into the back of our property. We're also concerned about the applicant's required destruction of trees that, that make up a part of this ravine area. Also, you know, we received this notice, we received the notice of this meeting on May seventeenth. We were literally given just a few days to, to review just an enormous amount of documentation with regards to this proposal. You know, we have a lot of concerns that we weren't properly consulted with. We are, we are directly affected by this build because this property is right behind We're also concerned about the forty-two variances. Variances are typically minor. I think when, when you're asking to extend your lot, the permitted length of your building by twenty meters, this is not a variance, this is not minor. Also, the request for three stories in, in an area where, you know, as, as much as you can say, oh, a block away and, you know, two blocks away, there are three-story buildings. Yes, you are right, there are three-story houses all around our area on appropriately, appropriate lots. This lot, all of the houses on that street, that this, that, and, and in around that area, all the lots that we are backing on to, all of their houses are built at the front of their lot with fairly significant backyards. So this, this one Saginay proposes to build a three-story building, taking up, you know, most of, of, of that lot, and basically encroaching on, I don't know, six or at least five of the neighbors' backyards. So this house would be essentially in the middle of a number of backyards. Our lot in particular has, I think it borders seven, seven properties, and, and one Saginay would now be basically at the top of the hill, like an apartment building, looking into our backyard. That's it. You know, we are, we are definitely opposed to the development. We are not opposed to somebody building a house on, on this lot. We would just like to be more involved in this, in, in, consulted, and, and we're, we're hoping, we're hoping that, that forestry takes an active role in ensuring that the trees at the back of the property that are part of this ravine are protected. Thank you.
Thank you, madam. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, I'll go to the next person on the list. I have Michael Orina Buckstein. Are you there?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Hello?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Yeah, can I get your full name and address, please?
Yes, I am Michael Buckstein at fifty-nine Otter Crescent.
Okay, thank you. If you'd like to give us your views on this application?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to echo the comments made by many of our neighbors. We are concerned about the number of variances, the forty-two variances requested from this committee, that in our opinion do not constitute a minor variance of the bylaw. We are pleased that the committee has requested, or that the developers have since announced their intentions to break some of the requests for three Saginay, but we are not yet satisfied that, about number one Saginay in particular, that's still requesting for three stories, that the length is thirty-six meters versus seventeen, which is permitted, that the width is thirty-six meters versus nineteen, which is permitted. And also, like our neighbor at fifty-seven Otter Crescent, we are located at the bottom of a three-meter embankment. The proponents are asking to remove thirty-eight trees, not just four trees. So there's four trees that are governed by RNFP, but there's nine trees that are close to the street, there's nine private trees, there's the three trees by ravine, and there are seventeen trees that they intend to injure. So this is a significant change to the ecology of the top of a, of an embankment in a sensitive wildlife area, and we are also concerned about erosion and hydrological changes, and I'm aware that this is, that the committee is not responsible for that, but it's something that should be kept in mind. And we are also concerned about the stakeholder consultation that was conducted for this development. We, like our neighbors, were actually only made aware of this with very little prior advanced notification. The letters of support that are available on the applicant portal are from the neighbors that are not immediately adjacent to this property. So it is a disingenuous, I'm to make it look like there is neighborhood support, where all of the immediately affected stakeholders, ourselves, seven Otter Crescent, all the other letters of objection that you can see on the applicant portal, we are the ones who are actually directly affected by this development, not the people who have submitted letters of support. We were canvassed by the proponents at one Saginay, one and a half hours before the deadline to submit letters of objection, and we tried to call the architect, Jim Pfeffer, last week. He did not respond to our call, despite that I've now spoken with RNFP, TPPR, TRCA, and all of whom were kind enough to respond to my calls. And just to conclude, we are not opposed to development in principle, but we are, we are concerned about the size and location and scope of this proposed development and the manner in which it's been approached. We would like the committee to reject this application or defer its approval, and for the proponents to sit down with us, our neighbors and their architects, to arrive at a mutually acceptable design. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, I'll just ask, Mr. Clapp, is, do we know if John Tiolas is, is there?
Mr. Chair, we've attempted to reach out to Mr. Tiolas without any success. We've also searched.
I'm going to take him off the list.
We've searched the participant list by first name, last name. Mr. Tiolas did not provide a phone number to be contacted.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clapp. I'll go to the agent, Mr. Pfeffer, are you there? Mr. Pfeffer?
I'm here.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
You've heard the comments from the previous speakers, if you, if you'd like to reply?
Yeah, if I can reply, and maybe to clarify what's going on here, if you could bring up that third page, which is the map of the properties, I'll just help the assistant committee by letting you know who's where and what, and what the situation is here. So actually, the page before this, not the satellite image, yeah, so we, we heard, I think, first from one hundred and forty-five Coldstream, which is a property below ours, which has that kind of large cabana immediately below the sort of left-hand side of our property. That was one forty-five Coldstream, I guess Nancy cried to. Fifty-seven Otter Crescent is that property that comes off, obliquely off the corner of our property on the left-hand side. They said they were immediately behind us, but as you can see, it's only a very small portion of their side property line, which intersects that little truncated corner of our property, and then fifty-nine Otter Crescent, which is the property that is, in fact, immediately behind this property. So speaking to the concerns of one hundred and forty-five Coldstream, one of the things she mentioned is that there are forty-two variances. We've struck a number of those, but the number of variances, of course, we've got three properties, some of those variances are basically for existing conditions at the back of seven Saginay, or, or replicating a garage, which was essentially non-compliant anyways. A lot of these variances are also essentially technical in nature, like there's variances for a dormer, or there's variances for a chimney breast, but at the end of the day, they're not a measure of what is appropriate. Flooding, as the chair mentioned, is simply not a concern, and of course, we're going to do it right. There is still a ton of green space on this property. Everything will be infiltrated on the property, as it should be. In particular, I'd like to speak to the concern that she mentioned about the look and feel of those trees. If I could actually get the, Brendan, if you could flip to page ten of my report. So Nancy showed you a photo from her letter, which was taken with whoever took that photo standing at their back fence, looking directly into the side yard of this property. And I have to say, if you, if you stand at the backyard of your property and look directly into your neighbor's yard and say, well, you know, this is a view that I feel, it, it's, it's an intrusive view almost into that, that property, and her house, as a matter of fact, is over a hundred and fourteen feet from this property line. She said, oh, if you could go one more page down, please? She said she always likes the look and feel of these trees. Well, I would point out to the committee that at any time, the owner of seven Saginay would plant a row of columnar trees along that side property line and obliterate the view of those Coldstream neighbors into this property. Her property there, you can actually see, actually, so on the right-hand side, that's looking to some of the properties a little bit further north, I guess, towards the back of the property, a lot of screening there. Her cabana is that cabana that's on the right-hand side photograph. It's about close to fifty feet long, it's eighteen feet wide. I'm sure when it was built, it had an impact on the neighbors to the side, but the zoning bylaw allowed it anyways. And I would point out to the committee that this owner of seven Saginay could build a cabana just as long, four meters high, a foot from that property line, and completely obliterate that view into the property, and they wouldn't have to come to committee to do it. Having a view from a rear yard into someone else's side or rear yard through a side property line, it simply isn't something that's protected by the zoning bylaw or the official plan. It's not, it's not an appropriate, it, it's not protected. It's not a type of. Yeah, going on to the owner of fifty-seven Otter Crescent, if you can just go to the next page, please. I took a photo looking over the back fence of seven Saginay. That's the photo on the bottom that's looking towards those Otter Crescent properties. The Otter Crescent properties, by the way, you'd have to walk almost a kilometer to get to the front door of this property, from Coldstream, half a kilometer to get to the front door, because the streets aren't connected. That bottom photo that's looking towards those Otter Crescent properties, it's in the dead of winter, and you can't see a thing.
Thank you.
You cannot see the properties.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? Okay, there being none. I'm just going to go through, and I'm, actually, I have one question of the speaker. Sir, can I ask you, right now, am I correct that there are, the subject properties are technically one, two, three, four, five existing lots? So could, if, if the property, if the buildings on lot three seventeen and three eighteen, the building on three seventeen and three eighteen was demolished, could you build theoretically, based on, could you build five houses on these five lots?
We could build four houses on these five lots because four of those lots have street frontage, one is kind of landlocked towards the back of the property.
Okay, thank you.
So we could build four new houses.
One other question, with respect to number one Saginay, planning was recommending that the third story be deleted. Are you proposing to delete that third story?
That's an essential element of my client's program, so no, thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, sir. I'll go through, committee, bear with me here, I'm going to try and go through all these variances, or, just to make sure that we've captured everything. I will refer to the staff report, which has it down in a little more detail, and just see what, make sure I've captured everything. With respect to three Saginay, variance number four is being deleted, which relates to the driveway width. Variance number six, number of platforms, that's being deleted. Numbers, variance number seven, which relates to the proposed area of the rear yard platform, that's being deleted. Variance number eight, which relates to the rear yard setback, that is being deleted. Variance number nine, which relates to the proposed building height, is being reduced from ten point eight three meters to ten point five meters. Variance number ten, for the proposed number of stories, is being deleted, that's for three Saginay. Variance number eleven, which relates to the proposed width of the dormers, that's being deleted. Variance number twelve, which relates to the proposed building length, is being reduced from twenty-eight point seven four meters to twenty-three point eight seven meters. Variance number thirteen, for the proposed building depth, is being reduced from twenty-seven point six meters to twenty-one point seven six meters. Variance number fourteen, it's the skylight projection, that's being deleted. Variance number eighteen, which relates to eighteen and nineteen, which relates to the building height, is being released, reduced from nine point seven eight meters to nine point six five meters. Finally, with respect to variance, variances related to one Saginay, variance number one, which relates to, the proposed building height is being reduced from eleven point five eight meters to eleven meters. Variance number two is being deleted. Variance number three is being deleted, which is side yard setback. Both of those were north and south side yard setbacks. And the applicant is requesting that, while planning had recommended that the third story be deleted on number one Saginay, the applicant is not requesting that. That's the recommendation from planning. And then planning is recommending, if we do approve the revised variances, they're built according to the subject plans. I know that's a mouthful, and my apologies, but if I could have a motion on this revised application, please. Ms. Sankar?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. Look, I've listened to the applicant really, really carefully. I think, you know, I, I've wanted to give a complete benefit and be completely fair and ethical in this process of hearing him out, and also, at the same time, hearing what the neighbors have had to say, and experts from various regions, whether it's ravine, forestry, verbally or in writing, our staff, et cetera. You know, I've, I've seen some letters of support, and then I've also heard of, you know, the concerns of the neighbors, et cetera. And despite the fact that, you know, there are some areas in here, like heritage, that have given standard conditions and that were well explained by the agent himself, and I accept many of his explanations, still, this application does not sit well with me, and it does not sit well with me for a number of reasons. I do believe that there was a lack of consultation with the neighbors. I do believe that, given the numbers of variances, and it's not just the sheer numbers, it's the fact that we're making changes on the spot, thereby, whether technical or not technical, it's changing the shape of this application, which leads me to believe it's not minor. And given the testimonies of the neighbors, to me, it does not fit with the character of that particular street and neighborhood. The, the forestry concerns still stand, you know, as, as well as all of the other elements that go into the concerns and issues that need to be addressed with this application. I'm going through this in a thorough manner because I, I just want the understanding that I really have given this the thought that I think it, it needs, and I've asked at the beginning, please, can this be deferred, just to get a handle and address this in the time that you need to do it, and not just within the form of this hearing? But that was refused, so it only gives me the opportunity to either approve or to deny, and for that reason, I deny this application. That's my motion.
Thank you, Ms. Sankar. I have a motion to refuse the application from Ms. Sankar. Someone to second that motion? Mr. Hunt seconds. All those in favor? Opposed? Yes, Mr. Kidd's in favor as well. That motion carries unanimously. Sir, your application's been refused. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number three, 505 Sudan Avenue.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I have reached out to Ms. Halpin and she wishes to withdraw her request to speak today.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Clapp. We have one person registered to speak, that's Mr. Glenn Rubenoff. This is 505 Sudan Avenue. Mr. Rubenoff, are you there?
Yes, good morning.
Yes, Mr. Rubenoff, thank you very much. I noticed that going through your file, I have a couple of reports on file. One from urban forestry, standard conditions. One from city planning dated the 14th of May. They indicate they appear to have no objection to your application, provided that the property is developed substantially in accordance with the west and east side elevation drawings submitted to the committee of adjustment attached as attachments one and two to their report. It's pretty clear what you're asking for in the variances that we have before us. I just wanted to ask, and first of all, have you read that material that's on file from city staff?
Yes, I have, yeah. And I understand it's, and it's fine, all that. We're in agreement with that, yes.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is there anything that you'd like to tell the committee that isn't in the material that we have before us this morning?
Just simply that my client spoke with the neighbor who withdrew from speaking today, that he spoke with her and that's why there's an agreement in place with them. So that's why she's.
Okay, thank you very much. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, could I get a motion on this application, please? Mr. Kidd?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe this application is minor and meets the four tests for minor variance. I'd like to move to approve the application, subject to the condition of the May 14th planning staff report, that the property be developed substantially in accordance with the west and east side elevation drawings submitted to the committee of adjustment and attached to the planning report as attachments one and two, and subject to forestry condition.
Thank you, Mr. Kidd. Someone to second that motion? Ms. Sankar seconds. All those in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Mr. Rubenoff, your application's been approved, subject to urban forestry and city planning conditions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number four, 272 Cranbrook Avenue. I have one person registered to speak. That is a Maydi Ajvand. I hope I pronounced that correctly. Are you there?
Yes, sir, that's okay.
Yes, hello, sir, thank you. I'm just going through your file. I note that there's two staff comments with respect to your application, one from urban forestry, their standard conditions, one from city planning dated the 14th of May. They appear to have no objection to your application, provided the property is developed substantially in accordance with the east and west side elevation drawings submitted to the committee of adjustment attached as attachments one and two to their report. Have you had the opportunity to read those reports, sir?
Yes, sir, and we are in total agreement with them.
Okay, thank you, sir. It's pretty clear what you're asking for in the six variances that you have before us. I'm just going to ask, is there anything that you'd like to tell the committee that isn't in the material that we have before us this morning?
Actually, yes, I just tried to be brief. I know that you have a long items to review today. Regarding those numbers, you know, for the wall height that we are asking is just related to the front portion of the building as the side elevation showing that. And also regarding the side setback variance, what we are asking is just for the second floor projection over the driveway that we have and it's on the grade, we even have more than required side setback. If there is any other question, I would be more than happy to address it.
And you're not proposing any modifications to your application, are you?
No, sir. We did have back and forth with our neighbors and as you can see on your file, we have support from our adjacent neighbor, eastern neighbor, and also have some, a couple of other supportive letter from them.
Okay, thank you. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? Mr. Khan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Ajvand, my question is about variance number three, floor space index, very high, 0.87. Go ahead.
Sure. Actually, this is a very comparable number comparing with what is happening in the neighborhood, specifically in the Cranbrook Street. We did, you know, so many other projects, so many even approved cases with more than that, 97, 88, 87. We are in the middle of it. Actually, this was one of the concern from our neighbor, which we provided all those similar cases for them and they are agreed with that considering the size of property is still very, it's still very defensible size. It's not a decent sized house, it's just 2,300 square feet. But considering what's going on in the Cranbrook Street, it's very comparable and that's why even the staff was in favor of our application.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does the committee have any further questions of the speaker? There being none, could I get a motion on this application, please? Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In looking at the application, I believe that it does meet the four tests under the legislation and I would move approval. Subject to the planning staff condition that it be developed substantially in accordance with east and west side elevation drawings submitted to the committee of adjustment attached, attachments one and two to their report and the May 19th, 21 urban forestry requirements.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hunt. Someone to second that motion? Ms. Sankar seconds. All those in favor? Opposed? Mr. Khan dissenting. Sir, your application's been approved, subject to urban forestry and city planning conditions.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Now on item number five, 139 Bing Avenue. I have a, one person registered to speak, the agent Linda Lei, L-A-I, are you there?
Oh. Yeah, actually, I register.
Yeah, can I get your full name and address, please?
Hi, my name's Linda, 139 Bing Avenue, yes.
Okay, thank you very much, madam. I just wanted to ask, I've got a couple of reports here on file with your application. One from city planning dated the 17th of May. They have no objection to your application, provided the proposal is constructed substantially in accordance with the east, west and north elevation drawings submitted to the committee of adjustment attached as attachment one, two and three to their report. There's also, there's also a report from Transportation Services dated the 19th of May and they're actually recommending refusal, indicating they think your driveway is too wide. Now, if you'd like to.
Sorry to interrupt. I will let my agent to speak. Her name is Sherry, Sherry Ng. Thank you, sorry.
Sir, can I get your full name and address, please? Sir, can I get your full name and address, please?
Sherry.
Hello, Linda, are you there?
Hello.
Hi.
Can I get your full name and address, please?
Sherry should be on the.
Okay. Oh, need to unmute her voice.
Yeah, please unmute her phone. Yeah, microphone, microphone.
Who is speaking on your behalf?
Sherry.
Okay.
Sherry Ng on the list, yeah.
Can I get your full name and address?
Mr. Chair, if I may, yes, there was no agent registered with respect to this application, so we do not have this information readily available for their agent to speak. Okay? So we do, we do see a Sherry Ng in the participant list, so if you may, or if we may, we can go forward. However, it's advised that agents register in accordance with the participation guidelines in the public hearing notice.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clapp. Is there a Sharon Ng there?
Yes, I'm here, I'm sorry about that. My name is Sherry Ng, yeah.
Oh, Sharon Ng.
And my address.
Madam, are you, can I get your full name and address and are you acting on behalf of the owner?
Yes, I am. So my name is Sherry Ng, my address is 2662 Blower Street West, Suite 907, Toronto, Ontario, postcode M8X2Z7, and I'm the architect for the application at 139 Bing Avenue.
Okay, thank you. As I wanted to ask, have you had the opportunity to take a look at those two reports that I just mentioned, the one from city planning and the one from Transportation Services?
Yes, yes, we have. We actually have a revised zoning notice from Albert Smith that has removed some of the variants from the original eight items down to five items. And we do, we would like to respond with the transportation of the winding of the driveway as well.
Okay.
So I can go over each variant?
Yes, if you'd like to, if you'd like to speak to that, then please do so. If you'd make, want to make a presentation to the committee, then please go ahead.
Yes, please. Okay, going with variance number one, originally, we had more than 50% of the wall to demolish, but we have shown the zoning examiner, we are actually keeping more than 50% of the ground floor main wall to remain. So that's why the new variance has been removed for item number one. So it is not a new development. Moving on to variance number two, this is relation to, with the driveway. The city bylaw has a limit of maximum 4.41, we're asking for relief for a five point.
Sherry, can you please go through the variances as they're listed on the hearing notice, not on the zoning review?
Okay, okay. So for variance number one is related to driveway. Again, the maximum is 4.41 and the width, the proposed width is 5.89. And again, we, our client is trying to develop, to make her home since 1997 into a multi-generation home and she plans to grow old and we're gonna make the home accessible. So they will have accessible washroom, vertical lift, and in relation to that, we would like a driveway that is also accessible. So referring to a supporting document that we have uploaded on the website, from the City of Toronto accessibility guidelines, the recommended width for a vehicle is 3.4 meters wide. In addition, they ask for a clearance space next to the vehicle for loading. So as you can see, the diagram here is 3.4 meters wide for the vehicle as well as a clearance space. And if you look at the second page of the same document, the recommended turning radius for new accessible wheelchair, again, based on the draft City of Toronto accessibility guidelines, is 2.5 meters turning radius. So you were to add the 2.5 meter radius with the vehicle clearance will bring you to nine, 5.9 meters. And that is the width that we're requesting for the driveway.
Okay, thank you, madam. Can I ask you, the, madam, can I ask you how, there's an existing driveway there now, correct?
Yes, yes.
And how wide is it?
Just give me a second.
It looks like it's a fairly, it's at least a two-car width at least, so almost six meters.
Yes, that's right, that's right. Just over six meter.
Yeah, that's the existing width. If I go up and down, I went up and down Bing Avenue, it's not unusual to find double-car driveways on Bing Avenue, is that correct?
No, it is, that's right.
Okay, all right, thank you. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? Ms. Sankar?
Yeah, just a quick question about variances six and seven, about the setbacks, if there's anything that you'd like to make in terms of a comment on that? Why is it so long?
Yeah. Six and seven, okay, six and seven with the east and the west setback is actually the existing building footprint.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, okay.
That's good, thank you.
Okay, okay. So do you want me to still go over the other items? So we got variance one, we talked about that, six and seven, we talked about. Variance number three, the maximum ground floor in relationship to the established grades 1.2, we're asking for a very minor relief for basically 80 centimeters difference.
Okay, thank you.
That's variance number three. For variance number four, the length of the building under the zoning is limited to 17 meter. However, again, we're keeping with the existing footprint of the building, which is 17.12. And again, we're asking for relief because it is an existing condition.
Okay, thank you, madam. Does the committee have any further questions of the speaker? There being none, could I get a motion on this application, please? Ms. Sankar?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. You know, looking at this application and the explanations given by the applicant themselves, I believe that it is minor and that it meets the character of the neighborhood, despite the fact that transportation wanted variance, one refused. I find that the accessibility report that the applicant has referred to and the specific needs of the family that's going there, I'm willing to overlook that for this minor change. And so for that reason, I'm going to motion to approve this application and make it subject to the May 17th staff report in that the proposal be constructed substantially in accordance with the east and north elevation drawings submitted to the committee. And that's my motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sankar. Someone to second that? Mr. Kidd seconds. All those in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Madam, your application has been unanimously approved, subject to city planning conditions.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number six, 145 Briar Hill Avenue. I have two people registered to speak. The agent is Glenn Rubenoff. Are you there, sir?
Yes, I am. Good morning.
Yes, hi, Mr. Rubenoff. Just wanted to ask, before we start, I have three staff reports on file with your application. One, the standard conditions from urban forestry. There's a Transportation Services report dated the 19th of May of this year, they have no objection to the proposed driveway width. There's a city planning report dated the 14th of May of this year, it has no objection to the variances with the exception of landscaping variances which they find excessive. And if approved, they are recommending constructing the driveway with permeable materials. Now, I note that we have other persons registered to speak on this application, sir, so if you'd like to give us a brief presentation on what just sees the merits of your proposal?
Sure, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, so this application's for a new home at 145 Briar Hill. We've, I just wanted to address that comment about the city planning with regards to the permeable paving requested. The reason it's requested is because we have a driveway and we have a right-of-way. And one of the variances for the width of the driveway includes the right-of-way. The right-of-way has to be maintained as hard landscape effectively, which contributes to the percentage of hard landscaping there. That is why there's a width variance for the driveway. It's also why planning's identified it as requesting that the driveway be built with permeable pavers. So it's all about the proximity of the house to the street and the porch and the walkway and so on. So I feel that that's, that the report, that the only comments that they really had were related to the landscaping and I feel that where we, it would be addressed through permeable paving. But the reason for it is because we are also using, we are also, the right-of-way is being calculated as part of that driveway width and also part of that hard landscaping. I mean, overall, this. I mean, overall, this, uh, this, uh, application, um, is not out of, uh, context with other developments in this neighborhood. Uh, there's, uh, we, we provided a map which shows different, uh, uh, developments, uh, on the street and in the area, uh, with, with, with similar or more lengths than what we're requesting and more GFA than what we're requesting. We're requesting sixty-nine percent, which, uh, as a renovation is a permitted, uh, uh, density. So we're not, so density is not out of character with, with the area in any way. Um, the, um, uh, the variances related to the east side main wall height is, the majority of the house complies, the eaves are, are at or under the required seven point five. We have two projections that come above the roof line for windows and that is what is, um, uh, causing that variance on the east side. So, uh, again, it's not the whole wall, it's just those two projections. Um, and that's what, uh, um, uh, that's what that's about. So I, I feel like this, this application is, uh, is very reasonable, um, in, in the way that it's, uh, it's, it will fit in to the character of the neighborhood, uh, that it's, uh, um, that it was designed, uh, with, with planning. We, we had went back and forth with planning, made adjustments to it. And that's why the report's just, uh, requesting a condition. Um, so I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. I, I just wanted to ask, I was up to take a look at the property and I, I think it's pretty clear that there is an existing mutual right-of-way there, but it's so narrow that you can't effectively use it. Am I correct in that observation?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, and, and there's, so the, the properties on either side both have front yard parking, am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Uh, does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, I'll go to the next person on our list. I have, uh, Justice Orsuzan Benseler.
Hello, that's me. I'm not sure whether you can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you. Can I get your full name and address, please?
Yeah, my name is Justice Benseler. I'm at one forty-one Briar Hill Avenue, that's, uh, on the left-hand side to the property.
You'd like to give us your thoughts on this application?
Yeah, I, I personally don't think that it's, uh, reasonable or does fit the neighborhood when you look at the houses next to it. This proposal is gonna go way further out in the back than both houses next to it. And for us, for our property, uh, in particular, it means that, uh, in terms of, uh, extent in the back, it'll go further than our, um, back deck. And, uh, so therefore, uh, it'll shade in the back, it'll shade in the backyard, uh, will look at a, pretty much at a wall from our, uh, back living room. And, uh, so therefore, we do not like it. And yeah, the variance, I don't know, that's, I don't know what's minor or not, but to me, it's not minor. That's basically our main concern is, is the depth. Building heights is also in excess of what's permitted and, uh, that only contributes to, to our concern. For the front, I think that width of the driveway, I don't know, uh, well, how you see it. To me, I see it that it probably leads to having two cars sitting in front because that's what the width allows, as a matter of fact, and not necessarily as what's permitted from the city. I don't know whether they'll apply for two parking spots in front of the house or whether that's gonna be part of this, um, yeah, this discussion with the, uh, committee of adjustment. But that's what it might lead to and of course, I wouldn't like that either, no, having two cars parked there with a lot of motion going in and out when the car from the garage has to move. Yeah. Basically, that's our main concern and, uh, we are not too happy about the proposed building because it exceeds the limits of, uh, what's given there in multiple ways. It would be nice if it would be all the same depth and therefore, everybody could enjoy the backyard the same way. But as I can see often, those limits, uh, yeah.
Okay.
I'm not, yeah, but I, okay, yeah, that's my comment.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, I'll go back to, uh, Mr. Rubenoff, are you there?
Hi, yes, uh, thank you.
Comments from the previous speaker, if you'd like to reply?
Yeah, um, so it's a right-of-way adjacent to a single drive. Uh, we cannot park on the right-of-way. So it's not, uh, it's an access for both him and us to access the property. So, uh, it's, it's, it's one space parking, just to clarify that. And the space is entirely on the property, so it doesn't require a, uh, a, an application with the city for, uh, front yard parking because it's not sharing it with the, uh, with the city. I believe it's meeting all the requirements for that. Anyways, uh, the other question he brought up was the building, was, was the impact of, of sun and shadowing. Um, it is a south-facing backyard. So, uh, you know, it's not, it, it, the effects of, of light, we're not asking for an overall height variance. We're really asking about, it's a wall height, as I mentioned, what it's about regarding. Um, I feel that it's, uh, it's, it's not gonna have as big an impact as, as he might, um, uh, believe. It, it's actually consistent with other, other, uh, um, other homes in the area. But I think that, uh, to also with the right-of-way, the spacing between the homes, there's enough distance that, uh, the impact will be minimal. Um, I should also mention that we did, uh, um, my client did speak and get, uh, I believe it's ten letters of support. The adjacent neighbor, one forty-seven on the other side, was in support as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rubenoff. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, could I get a motion on this application, please? Mr. Khan?
Uh, thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I'm taking the recommendation of the staff and, uh, I'm moving that it should be approved, subject to the condition of the forestry conditions. And also, condition set forth by the staff is use permeable material for the driveway. With that, I move that this application be approved because it is minor variance.
Okay, just to clarify, Mr. Khan, uh, with respect to, uh, were you going to ma, were you going to put in the city planning recommended condition of the fourteenth of May?
That's right, sir. That's the one.
Yeah, which is recommend constructing the driveway with permeable materials?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Thank you. Someone to second that motion? Mr. Hunt seconds, all those in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Your app, Mr. Rubenoff, your application's been approved, subject to urban forestry and city planning conditions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number seven, ninety-six Alexandra Boulevard. I have one person registered to speak. That is Ian Andres. Are you there?
Yes, I am. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee.
Yes, thank you. Can I get your full name and address, please?
Yes, my name's Ian Andres, last name's A-N-D-R-E-S. I'm a lawyer with Goodman's. I'm here on behalf of the owners and applicants, Rebecca Herman and Zach Kerbel. And my business address is three thirty-three Bay Street, Suite thirty-four hundred.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify, sir, just, uh, your application, you just have the one variance before us, it's with respect to the parking, uh, spot located in a side yard. This is in relation to your application to convert the existing garage into habitable space. We had, there were a couple of reports from transportation services, the latest from the twenty-fifth of May, indicated they have no objection to your application, uh, which is the, the variance with respect to the proposed parking spot located in a side yard, provided that the applicant adds a notation on the site plan drawing stating that all portions of existing site access driveways that are no longer required must be closed and restored with soft landscaping and full concrete curbs to the satisfaction of transportation services. I was just looking at your plans, sir. You're not proposing to change your driveways, am I correct?
You are absolutely correct, Mr. Chairman. And, uh, this is, this is strictly a, a single variance to regulate, legalize an existing condition. There's an existing driveway that comes north off Alexandra along the side, the west side of the existing house. It's existed in that location for decades. Transportation Services is okay with that. They're not, uh, asking that it be moved in any way. So with all due respect, I, I think that, I'm not sure that comment makes a lot of sense because it's clear that the driveway is proposed to remain in its, in its current location.
That's what I thought.
So I, yeah, that's right. No, and in fact, nothing, the, the only thing that's changing, Mr. Chairman, in this application is the, the existing detached garage, which has never in fact been used as a garage by the current owners. It's only been used for storage. It's in pretty rough shape and I, I submitted some photos to demonstrate that. It's used for storage of bins and bicycles and stuff like that right now. So the, the, um, the building permit application is to convert that to some usable space for my clients and their children. And the, they have always parked their vehicles on the driveway in the side yard and that remains what they want to do going forward. So this is a technical zoning issue where the zoning bylaw requires a parking space and it doesn't allow it in the side yard, even though it's existed in the side yard here and been used in that location for quite some time. It's never actually been used in the garage, but it's just triggered because now the garage is proposed to be converted to something else. So it theoretically removes it from consideration for parking, I guess. So transportation has confirmed they have no concerns with this. And, uh, again, I think that comment was put there out of an abundance of caution, but there's no intention to change the access or move the driveway in any way. So I would respectfully request that it not be imposed as a condition. I think that'll just lead to more confusion. And I, I certainly have other remarks prepared. I'm happy to speak to the four tests. I think it's quite clear this application meets the four tests. There's letters of support filed by all of the neighbors in the immediate vicinity. Uh, staff have no other concerns at all. And as I said, it's, it's really quite a modest technical, uh, variance being proposed.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? Okay, if I could get a motion on this application, please note that the, uh, latest staff report from transportation services dated the twenty-fifth of May is technically redundant. The applicant's made it very clear he's not changing the, uh, existing driveway access or the design, so that that condition is, is, is not necessary. Uh, if I could get a motion on this application, please? Mr. Kidd?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I believe the application is, uh, minor, meets the four tests for minor variance. I'd like to put forward a motion to, uh, accept the application, uh, without condition.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kidd. Someone to second that? Ms. Sankar seconds, all those in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Sir, your application's been unanimously approved without condition.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Thank you. Item number eight, seventy-five Canterbury Place. I have two people registered to speak. I actually, I have two people, uh, they both seem to be connected to the property. Uh, Mr. Clapp, you know, there's a, a gentleman named Adrian Frank as a speaker. Is he this, is he acting on beh, with the agent? Do you know, do we know?
I'm not entirely sure, Mr. Chair. Perhaps we could, uh, unmute Adrian Frank and we'll ask him, yep.
I'll ask him.
Yes, he is. I can, I can advise.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so, so, Mr. Frank, you're, 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 uh, you're in connection with the agent?
That is correct, sir. I, I would respectfully ask that, uh, Mr. Peter Smith, who is also registered, um, be given an opportunity to speak first. He has a presentation prepared. And then I, I just have a couple of comments in response to the staff materials that have been submitted.
Thank you, sir. Uh, I'll, I'll go with, uh, Mr. Frank, are you speaking for Mr. Peter Smith?
No, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair.
No, no. Mr. Smith is here and I would like.
Yes, he's allowing Mr. Smith to speak first.
Okay, thank you.
And then Mr. Frank will proceed.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I have, uh, sir, so, Mr. Smith, are you, you're speaking?
Um, yes, thanks very much and good afternoon. Sure, it's, uh, Peter Smith. Um, I was re- registered, so you should have all my information, but it's, uh, Bowsfields. I'm a planner, partner with Bowsfields. Address is three Church Street, Suite two hundred, Toronto, M five E one M eight.
Okay, thank you, sir. I noted going through your file that there's a, a report here from city planning dated the eighteenth of May, twenty twenty-one. They were recommending that your application be refused. However, if committee does approve it, the owner should be required to enter into a section, sub, subsection forty-five nine one agreement of Planning Act to pay a monetary contribution in the amount of five hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars to be used for the, to provide public recreation centers or social facilities servicing the North York Centre area and/or towards the cost of the city acquiring lands necessary for completing the planned service roads and associated road networks and buffer areas in the North York Centre. So that's, uh, the, the only file I have on report on, I have, only report I have on file for this application, sir. I think you'd better give the committee a, a, uh, presentation on what you see as the merits of your proposal? Or would you like to defer it to discuss it further with planning?
No, there's been numerous discussions with planning, um, before and after the application has been submitted. So I'd like to address the committee and as part of that, I'll address the staff comments.
Okay, thank you. If you'd like to proceed, then?
Yeah, so the, there should be a presentation that we filed in advance that perhaps we can just refer to. So this is, um, uh, an application that's seeking two variances in respect of a, a recent, recently completed thirty-story condominium building, uh, in the North York Centre. Um, if you go to, uh, page three, um, the first variance is with respect to the dimension of, uh, bicycle parking spaces. I don't believe that there is any issue with respect to that. Those are standard dimensions, so I won't spend any time on that. But rather, I'm gonna focus on variance two, which is on page five. And this relates to the enclo, the enclosure of what is today unused space that's located in the underground garage of the building. And the purpose of the enclosure of this, um, unused space is to create storage lockers for the residents, the purchasers of the, the units. Where, um, the variance arises is because this is in the North York Centre, which, as you know, has its own set of rules and definitions. And what we are doing is we're requesting that in this case, the definition of gross floor area be varied so as to exclude storage lockers below grade from the calculation of gross floor area, as would be the case generally throughout the rest of the city. And the issue is that otherwise, based on the existing definition of gross floor area, the conversion of the, what is today unused space into storage lockers would put us over, uh, the gross floor area, uh, limit that's in, uh, the zoning bylaw. So, um, we've filed a, a planning justification letter with the application. I'm just gonna go through the four tests. So, um, first of all, in terms of why it's desirable. So if you could go to maybe, uh, page, say, page eight, I'm just going to explain, um, by looking at it. Uh, this is, um, the, uh, the P two floor plan. And so what's shown in the darker pink color is, um, the additional space that is actually available to be converted to, uh, storage lockers. And it's those, that area within each level of the underground garage that we're seeking to have excluded from the definition of gross floor area. So why it's desirable today, it's unused space. It's not doing anybody any good and it can be used for desirable use, which is storage lockers, um, which would be a desirable amenity for building residents. And I think you have on file, if we move up to, I think it's page, uh, page eight, or sorry, might be page eleven. If you just go, go forward, there's, there's just a summary of, um, of the letters. Okay, actually, this page here. So forty-seven of the, uh, the purchasers' residents have actually written letters in support of the variances because they would like to have this, uh, storage locker space as an amenity. So that's why it's desirable. In terms of why it's minor, there is absolutely no negative impact associated with it. If there's any impact, it's positive, uh, for the residents. And that's because the space is entirely below grade. It exists today. It cannot be seen. And if it's converted to, um, locker storage, it's not going to generate more residents, more traffic, or any other type of impact. In terms of the official plan, um, the intent of the official plan- In terms of the official plan, the intent of the official plan, the North York Centre secondary plan in particular, in terms of the gross floor area definition and the associated density limits, was all about in the first place trying to control the amount of development in North York Centre relative to the transportation capacity that was identified way back when the secondary plan was put in place. And given that the intent is really all about controlling for transportation impact, the fact that what's being created here is not additional units, but rather storage space which will not independently generate any transportation impacts means that, in my view, the intent of the official plan is being maintained. In terms of the zoning bylaw, this is really a very technical definitional matter. And as I've mentioned else previously, elsewhere in the city, including in the new citywide zoning bylaws.
Thank you.
Yep.
Just to clarify, I noted that there, I didn't see anything on file with this application from staff that indicates that the proposed bicycle parking stall dimensions are are non-functional. I haven't seen anything to that that would justify refusing that variance. With respect to, can I clarify with respect to the 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 other variance that you're asking for with respect to the lockers, the increase in gross floor area? So just to clarify, the only reason that it's not allowed is because it's under the old North the old North York official plan that considers this as as part of the gross floor area. If you were under the new bylaw, five sixty-nine, twenty thirteen, am I correct that these lockers would not be included in the definition of gross floor area?
You are correct.
Okay, thank you. I'll just ask the committee if it has any any questions of the speaker? There being none?
Could I just, I don't want to speak. I didn't realize I'd gone over my five minutes. I just want to say if the committee were to approve it, we would not be agreeable to the recommendation of the condition for the payment of the 561,000. I just want to make sure that that's on the record. Thank you, sir.
Yes, I I.
For the indulgence.
I think that can be assumed. Can I get a, can I get a, could I get a motion on this?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, before a motion, if I may, I think Mr. Frank wanted to speak to this still.
But he's he's with the agent. Okay, Mr. Frank, are you there?
Adrian? Yes, sir, I've just been unmuted. I I do act on behalf of the agent, but independently of Mr. Smith, and pardon me, on behalf of the owner of the site and subject.
Mr. Frank, could you tell us something we already haven't heard?
Absolutely, sir. I would speak on on three matters. First is the the correct test that the committee is to apply, and and this is not news to you, sir, nor to any members of the committee. But the staff report indicates that we have not met the test of substantial accordance with the official plan. And unfortunately, I need to note that that is not the test that the committee is called upon to apply here. Similarly, in the letter from the councillor, it has been characterized as noncompliance with the official plan. Again, that isn't the test that we are asked to apply in this process. As you know, the test is one of maintaining the general intent and purpose. And in that light, as Mr. Smith noted, the general intent and purpose of the North York secondary plan, and in fact, these exact provisions, is one that comes from a different context than what applies today. And that is protecting against overdensification beyond the capacity of the transportation network. I can point you to other policies in the secondary plan that elucidate this. Policy is 1.10, which describes appropriate redevelopment that does not exceed the capacity of physical infrastructure and built form that is compatible with the residential community. Given that this variance is not associated with any changes in built form, stability of community, use of the resources of the community, if anything, storage here would remove the need for storage facilities within the community. On that basis, I would submit that we meet the correct test when it is stated correctly. And to to the extent that the committee has any hesitation with that idea, that this density limit in the OP is a problem, there is case law that I would direct your attention to drawing all the way back from 1987 in the city of Toronto, where the Committee of Adjustment approved a variance that included or was drawn from a prescribed density in the OP. The city appealed the decision to the municipal board. They said this policy exempts density from being subject to minor variances. It went all the way to the divisional court and the divisional court held, and I would like to read this for you. Nevertheless, there can be little doubt that the official plan, with that one specific exclusion, and that specific exclusion said you can't, you have to treat the density in the OP as being strict. You cannot by that one exclusion oust the jurisdiction of the Committee of Adjustment and of the Ontario Municipal Board to consider the general intent and purpose of the official plan. The standard for the committee is not conformity or compliance. So, sir, subject to any questions, I would just also confirm that, as Mr. Smith noted, our our client is not amenable to the condition. And I would just give you a brief synopsis on that. The amount that is requested needs to bear a nexus to both the development and the application, and the staff report offers no such connection between the two. Moreover, the amount that's being requested bears no evident relationship to the variance nor the value of the space. It's beyond any reasonable estimate of value in the city of Toronto. So, subject to your questions, those are my submissions.
Thank you, sir. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, could I get a motion on this application, please? Mr. Kidd?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I feel persuaded by the arguments presented by the the applicant. I don't see any negative impact of the change and they seem to be, to me, of a minor nature. I'd like to put forward a motion to accept the application without condition.
Thank you, Mr. Kidd. Someone to second that motion? Mr. Hunt seconds, all those in favor? Opposed? That's a tie vote. I will support Mr. Kidd's motion. And, sir, your application has been approved without without condition. Thank you very much, sir. Okay, we are now on item number nine, 119 Norton Avenue. I have one person registered to speak, Amiran Hadari. Are you there?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, member of the committee. Yes, my name is Mehran Hadari, ten nineteen, down in East London, Unit 506.
Thank you. Just wanted to ask, sir, I have a couple of reports on file with your application. There's a standard conditions from urban forestry. City Planning also indicates that in their report of the 17th of May that they have no objection to your application, provided that the proposal is constructed substantially in accordance with the west and east elevation drawings submitted to the Committee of Adjustment, attached as attachments one and two to their report. And have you had the opportunity to re to review those reports, sir?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir. You have three variances before us. I think the committee is pretty clear on what you're asking for. I'll just ask, is there anything you'd like to tell the committee that isn't contained in the material we have before us this afternoon?
No, just I just want to make clear, variance number three, the maximum building height is eight meter. The proposed building height is 10.28 meter. That is, it is higher than the approved variance before. And I just want to clarify, this is why, this is because the zoning examiner considered this one as a flat roof. And the 10% calculation of the flat roof is the more than 25% of the flat portion. So for this reason, the examiner considered pick off the roof as a flat portion and this variance comes up with this. So what technically what we have on the old by the height is 903 meter.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, could I get a motion on this application, please? Mr. Khan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm taking the, it's a minor variance. I'm taking that recommendation of the staff that this proposal be developed substantially in accordance with the east and west elevation drawing submitted to the Committee of Adjustment and attachment one and two to this report. And also, I'm taking forestry condition into consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. Someone to second Mr. Khan's motion? Ms. Sankar seconds, all those in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Sir, your application has been unanimously approved, subject to, subject to city planning and urban forestry conditions. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to take a five-minute break. Ladies and gentlemen, committee's back in session. We're now on item number ten, one ninety-four Sheldon Drake Boulevard. I have three people registered to speak. The agent is Ida Evangelista. Ms. Evangelista, are you there?
Good morning, or sorry, good afternoon. Yes, I am here, Ida Evangelista, fifty-three Bentworth Avenue, Toronto.
Thank you, madam. The only condition I have on file with your application, madam, from staff, is recommended conditions from urban forestry. We have two other persons registered to speak, madam, so if you'd like to give the committee a brief presentation on what you see as the merits of your proposal.
So what we have in front of you, there are, we are presenting with a few variances for this particular property. It is a lot of seven point six two by forty-five eighty. We have reached out to the neighborhood and you do see a petition of support in front of you. Planning, staff, transportation, everyone is in support of this application. We are asking for an additional length just due to the fact that this is a narrower lot, and it just gives us better opportunity to have a layout on the interior of the home. But it is an additional four feet. The building depth is due to the average of the two neighbors adjacent to, so that has, that has created our building depth. We are asking for an FSI of point six four, which includes a portion of the basement, which is behind the garage. There's a landing when you come out to the garage and that contributes to the FSI. However, if you do a calculation of the main floor, it's an FSI of point three zero, so which is below the point three five. The house is approximately two thousand, twenty-three hundred square feet, so it is not a large home. It is in characteristic of, you know, lots of these size. Our building height is taken to the top of the peak, which is indiscernible from the road. If you take, if you take the measurement to the ridge, the roof ridge, the height is eight point eight two. That's discernible from the road. If you're standing in front of the house, that's what you will see. So, and that's eight point eight two. And then we have our windows that encroach on the east elevation, and they've taken it to the top of the, the window on the side of the east elevation. So, we reviewed homes in this neighborhood, just to be, you know, characteristic to other homes. And you'll see from the presentation, from the submission that, that I've submitted, there are homes, and I've just, I just added a sprinkling of homes because there is many different, you know, there's an eclectic, eclectic mix of styles of homes and lot sizes. We have flat roof, we have mansard, we have peaked roof. It is, you know, quite an eclectic mix. Will our homes fit and be characteristic to the neighborhood? Absolutely, it will be. There are main wall heights in this neighborhood that start at eight point nine eight, you know, going to about nine. We have heights, overall heights that exceed ten point five zero, so we are within the character and speak to the character of the neighborhood. I do, and confirm that, and submit that this does meet the four tests, and we are amenable to forestry condition.
Okay, thank you, madam. Does the committee have any questions to the speaker? Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To the applicant, you mentioned in terms of variance three, that the, and I believe you said that the measurable FSI on the main floor is zero point three zero. Is that correct? Now, can you explain how you go from zero point three zero to zero point six four? Given that you also indicated that there was only a portion of the basement below grade, or a portion of the FSI below grade?
Through you, Mr. Chair, remember? So the main floor has, it's one oh four point six one square meters. The basement contributes ten point seven eight square meters, and the second floor is a hundred and six point four square meters, and that's what brings us to the point six four. If we do a calculation of the main floor of one oh four point six one with our lot area, that gives us an FSI of point three zero. And that's how I've arrived at, at that floor space, for the main floor.
Ms. Evangelista, what would the FSI be? If you exclude the basement area that, that is included, its gross floor area?
Point, point six one.
Point, okay, point six one, okay, thank you. Does the committee have any further questions to the speaker? There being none, we'll go to the next speaker on our list. We have Brian Wolfe. Are you there? Brian Wolfe, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Here.
Yes.
Put chat, say.
Mr. Wolfe, we can hear you. Can I get your full name and address, please?
Brian Wolfe, two twenty-seven Sheldon Drake Boulevard.
Okay, if you'd like to give us your thoughts on this application?
All right, so I'm, I live across the street. They displayed my house as one of the examples of the houses on the street. I had to go through the Committee of Adjustment years ago myself. I have a couple of concerns about the house going from point three five to point six five. I've never considered that as a, it's a minor variance. When I had to go through the committee, I had to meet much more stringent rules, so I think that's too much house on too little land. Second thing is, the main floor starts out at about nine feet. I mean, I'm not sure why the main floor on a flat lot has to go up to nine feet. And they have two ten-foot floors and a truncated roof. They filled up technically, I guess what you could have as a box for the house as to going as far forward as possible, to each side as possible, as far back as possible, and they're building as big as a box as they can with a small truncated roof. This house is higher than the majority of houses on the street, and is going to tower over the neighbors. It's too tall, it's too close to the neighbor. You want to make it closer to the sides, then you gotta sort of decrease the overall, I guess, how it imposes upon the house the size. They're just trying to get as much physical space in that land as possible. The main floor should be brought down if they want to do, certainly if they want to do ten-foot floors, and the main floor should not be starting out at nine feet. I guess those are my main concerns.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does the committee have any questions to the speaker? There being none, we'll go to our next speaker on the list. I have Catherine Fitten. Are you there?
Mr. Chair, I reached out to Ms. Fitten. She indicated that she wishes to withdraw her request to make a deputation.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll go back to Ms. Evangelista. Are you there?
Hi, yes, I'm here.
Yes, you've heard the comments from Mr. Wolfe, if you'd like to respond to them?
So, as I mentioned, I, I know Mr. Wolfe had concerns with the height. This will not over-tower. There are other homes in this neighborhood that, that have over, that have heights of, you know, over ten meters. What we are proposing is very characteristic to this neighborhood. The, the height that you will see, and that will be discernible from the road, is approximately eight point eight seven, as I had mentioned. That overall height is taken to the peak, which is stepped right back on the, on the roof line. You know, there are, this is an area where there's a different mix of homes, be it flat roof, you know, traditional-style homes, peaked roofs. And what we're proposing is characteristic to this neighborhood. It's a very eclectic neighborhood. You know, it, everyone gets along well together. You drive down the neighborhood, down the street, it's a beautiful neighborhood, and you see the variety of different homes. What we're proposing is not different than anything, than other homes in this neighborhood. It's not, will not be overbearing, it will not be overshadowing, it will fit harmoniously.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Evangelista. Does the committee have any questions to the speaker? There being none, could I get a motion on this application, please? Ms. Sankar?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. You know, I've accepted the explanations of the agent here today, and I do believe that this is characteristic for the neighborhood, and from my view, I believe that it is minor in nature, and I accept the explanations provided by the applicant. So I'll put forward a motion to approve this application and make it subject to forestry.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sankar. Mr. Hunt, seconds. All those in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Madam, your application's been unanimously approved, subject to urban forestry conditions.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Thank you, you too. Item number eleven, five sixty-seven Conacre Drive. I have two people registered to speak. I have a, the agent, Nicholas Costanni. Are you there?
Sir, I'm registered to speak on behalf of the applicant's owners of the property, and my name is Andy Margaritas. I'm their legal counsel. I don't believe there'll be any other agents speaking on behalf of my clients, sir, so that might have been some, on my end. I apologize for that, sir.
Sir, can I get your full name and address, please?
Of course, sir. My full name is Andy Margaritas, and my business address is four twenty-five Adelaide Street West in Toronto, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. I wanted to ask, we have, I'm looking at your file, I have one staff report in connection with your application, from City Planning, dated the seventeenth of May. They indicate that they have no objection to your application, provided the proposal is constructed substantially in accordance with the left and right elevation drawing submitted to the committees and attached as attachment one and two to their report. Just wanted to ask if you had the opportunity to review that report, sir?
Sir, I have had the opportunity to review that report and can confirm that my client supports the condition recommended by staff.
Okay, thank you, sir. We have one other person registered to speak. I know you have just three variances before us. If you'd like to give us a brief presentation on what you see are the merits of your proposal?
Of course, sir. Thank you for that. I, I believe, sir, this, first, thank you, Mr. Chair and committee, for allowing me to speak. I think some context is relevant here, sir. My clients filed and obtained variances in twenty eighteen to construct the proposed second-story rear extension, two-story rear extension to the home in twenty eighteen. They worked with staff to obtain the variances necessary. Staff didn't report on that twenty eighteen application, and it, the, the application was granted. And regrettably, sir, at the time my clients were filing for a building permit issuance, it came to light that the variances that had been identified by the zoning examiner weren't the ones they actually needed to construct the dwelling. So lo and behold, my clients began construction, and now we're coming back to the committee, sir, to obtain the actual variances that would have been required in the first instance. And so, really, the variances needed for length, depth, and coverage relate to the fact that in twenty eighteen, the measurements had been taken from, to a point, from the front of the garage to a point at the rear of the home, instead of to the rear of the, to the rear of the deck and below-grade storage area, sir. So here we are, seeking variances to allow the deck and below-grade structure, or below-grade storage, which in our view are minor, and if you note from the city's staff reports, sir, the same plans that were considered in twenty eighteen are the very same plans before this committee today. So, really, at that time, staff didn't appear to have concerns. They didn't report on it. Staff have reported on it this time around and appear to support the application, subject to the condition. The local counselor has also chimed in and appears to also support the application, subject to the condition. Sir, I, I'd like to note that the, the variances obtained in twenty eighteen and the, I'll say, amended variances we are seeking today, do not seek, they didn't then and don't seek now anything in terms of overall height, sidewall heights, platforms or platform heights, setbacks, all those types of variances that would often be associated with concerns of overlook or privacy. None of those exist. They didn't exist then, they don't exist now. We're simply trying to obtain the correct variances that allowed my client to build what they've built. And, sir, it's been just over two years, and my clients are eager to put this matter to rest, and, and we're happy to do anything that this committee might need. We, we have been working with staff, as I think you'll glean from their report. In my submission, sir, this application does meet the four tests under the Planning Act. It will allow my clients to legalize the built form that they thought they had approved back in twenty eighteen, and on the strength, sir, of the staff report, in my view, sir, this proposal won't destabilize the neighborhood and will fit in with the character of the neighborhood as it exists today.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does the committee have any questions to the speaker? Mr. Khan?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Margaritas, my question is that your previous application approved on May seventeen, twenty eighteen. Sir, I see all these three variation that you have applied are a little bit more than what was previously approved. What is the justification of saying that this is the same variances? These are not. These are much more increased than the previous one approved by the committee. How do you justify?
Thank you, sir. If, if it's possible to share my screen, I'd be happy to direct you exactly to, to why I say that, or if the drawings could be pulled up or the site plan, that'd be helpful. But, sir, I, thank you very much. If, sir, you look at, and I don't know if you can see my cursor, but there are two measurements, one for twenty-four point one eight and a second for twenty-seven point eight five. Sir, the, the built form that had been proposed in twenty eighteen is exactly the same as what we are seeking now. The only difference is, in twenty eighteen, the examiner took the measurement from the front of the garage to the rear of the home, where there's a little bit of a jut out. And, sir, the correct, the correct number should have been from the front of the garage to the rear of the deck. And that's why I say, sir, it's, and maybe I misspoke, it is the same built form that staff reviewed and considered in twenty eighteen. It's just that the quantum of the variance needed at that time was incorrectly provided by the zoning reviewer. So my clients had thought they were getting the appropriate variances needed to build the house. In fact, they needed different variances, just because the measurement had been taken to the incorrect rear portion of the home. Instead of the rear wall of the home, it should have been taken from the end of the first-floor porch, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. So in, in summary, basically, you're trying to correct the errors that were made, it sounds like, by the original zoning examiner back in twenty eighteen?
Sir, that's correct, and, and I know how hard zoning examiners work, and these things often happen, so I'm, I'm not trying to attribute any blame to anybody at the city, sir.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you, sir. We'll go to the next person on the list. I have a Wen Bin Lin. Are you there?
Yes, this is Wen.
Yes, can I get your full name and address, please?
Yes, Wen Bin Lin, five six five Conacre Drive.
Yes, sir, can I, if you could give us your thoughts on this application? Yes, sir, can I, if you could give us your thoughts on this application?
Well, this project started 2018, and I guess it's completed already, right? Because owner's moving already. And I got surprised, I got letter from you guys, still have public hearing. So I checked the website and checked status of the permit. And based on the information updated online on the city's website, there are a lot of stuff outstanding still, right? And foot and foundation is not passed, right? Struck framing, fire suppression, fire protection, and occupancy still outstanding. And also, there's order to comply not resolved yet. So I'm not against anybody. I just make sure, I'm just living the label, right? Just, I'm 565, and just make sure there's no safety issue. Because all the fire protection, all other stuff is outstanding, right? So we are just living the label, right? And public safety is the first priority. And I like to make sure there are no safety issues. That's all. And also, I'm sorry about that. Also, Wen, I don't know what's order to comply. I guess there are two windows, opening, new window opening without permit, right? As this is ordered the first floor, I don't know. Just make sure that everything, you know, we are in the bylaw, right? We are according to the law, right? And Wen Windows just face to my backyard balcony, second floor, like 12 feet away, right? And this is no permit, as I know.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, we'll go back to the applicant. Sir, are you there?
Hello? Yes, I am, sir.
You heard the comments from the previous speaker. Is there anything you'd like to reply to?
I did hear Mr. Lin's comments, sir, and I can advise that, as I understand, the order to comply was in relation to the need to obtain these revised variances. And of course, that's what we're trying to do here today. In terms of the windows, this is the first I've heard of it. But of course, if Mr. Lin is referring to a window, that would either be, I think, on the right elevation. Of course, we ask that this approval, if the committee sees fit to do so, be made subject to the condition with respect to those right and left elevations, which would then confirm what is being built is in accordance with what the city expects. And of course, sir, that is our intention.
Okay, thank you. And that's the recommendation that's in the city planning report?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Does the committee have any further questions of the speaker? There being none, could I get a motion on this application, please? Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have listened to the explanations of the applicant and considered the comments of the neighbor. And I think that the planning staff report condition covers off the concerns that were expressed. So I would move that this application be approved, subject to the planning staff condition that it be developed substantially in accordance with the left and right elevations submitted to the committee of adjustment.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Someone to second that motion? Mr. Kidd seconds. All those in favor? That motion carries. Sir, your application's been unanimously approved, subject to city planning conditions.
Thank you very much, committee. Have a lovely day.
Thank you. Item number 12, 135 Playfair Avenue. I have two people registered to speak. The agent is Franco Romano. Mr. Romano, are you there?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Franco Romano, Action Planning Consultants, 2095 Autumn Breeze, for credit.
Yes, thank you, sir. I just wanted to ask, I noted on your application that we only have one recommended condition from staff, and that's the standard conditions from urban forestry. We have one other person registered to speak. If you'd like to give us a brief presentation on what you see are the merits of your proposal?
Certainly, it's a fairly straightforward two-story detached dwelling proposal. The dwelling is situated such that there is zoning bylaw compliance with front yard setback, side yard setbacks, building length, lock coverage, rear yard setback, et cetera, landscaping, driveway location, et cetera. The variances before you today have to do with building height, and they're building height based on the contemporary modern style of a two-story, basically, flat or shallow roof. If you look at the front elevation, you will see that the first floor is situated, so then, the height of the first floor is pretty much where the height of the existing first floor is situated. So the first floor height that exists is the first floor height that is proposed, and that is generally aligned with the neighboring first floor height. So the neighbors are at geodetic elevations 178.78 meters and 177.44 meters. So a little bit lower on the left-hand side, the east side, and a little bit in virtually the same on the right-hand side or the west side. And from there, there are two levels that are imperial, 10-foot first floor and 9-foot second floor. So those are building height or floor-to-ceiling height measurements that are modest. And I would say that they are the same and perhaps even smaller than some of the first and second floor-to-ceiling height measurements that we see for new construction. So clearly, the two-story dwelling is taller than a one-story dwelling or bungalows that do exist and are being replaced, not only along Playfair but on the surrounding road network. And what we do see for new construction is that there are building height variances. We have 9.15 meters at 119 Playfair. We have 9.44 meters, 8.37 meters, 9.81 meters, 8.89 meters, et cetera, for other dwellings, not only on Playfair but on Glenlong, Glen Grove. So the surrounding road network has properties where new construction, whether the height is being measured from the Crown Road for the North York bylaw, where this has variance, I think, of 1.1 meters because it's from the Crown Road, not the adjacent established grade. Or if it's in relation to 569, 2013, two-story building heights do have some variances within this neighborhood context and on the immediate street. So in this instance, however, this proposal, that is the only nature of the variances being sought. There are no building length, side yard setbacks, or lock coverage variances that are being sought. So the proposal is actually less than what could be constructed as a 10-meter height for slope roof, and it complies with the two-story height permission that both bylaws regulate. So I don't believe that there's any unacceptable adverse impact that results from the proposal. And it's my opinion that the variances should be authorized. So subject to any questions, sir?
Thank you, sir. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, I'll go to the next person on the list. I have Irene Silla. Are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Madam, can I get your full name and address, please?
Irene Silla, and my address is 133 Playfair Avenue.
Okay, thank you, madam. If you'd like to give us your thoughts on this application?
I'm just honestly concerned about the size of the house, given that the neighborhood itself is mainly bungalows, especially within my block. There's only two two-story houses. And like I said, mainly bungalows along both sides of the street. The house will be coming within four feet of my property, so basically right to the fence line. I'm a bungalow between one two-story house right now and then this large two-story house. So mainly just concerned about that.
Okay, thank you, madam. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none. Mr. Romano, you heard the comments from Ms. Silla. If you'd like to respond?
Yes, I think the, like, it's clear that regeneration is not occurring in a bungalow format right now. Two-story dwellings that are being regenerated are certainly taller than one story. And I think this proposal is respectful of that condition because it does have those other compliance features, the side yard setback, the building length is shorter than what's permitted. Lock coverage is a few percentage points lower than what is permitted. So it's, when we're balancing all of the aspects of what could be constructed and what is being regenerated in the neighborhood in terms of two-story dwellings, this is not an overly large dwelling. It's very much in keeping with regeneration that's to be anticipated.
All right, thank you, Mr. Romano. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, could I get a motion on this application, please? Mr. Khan?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chair, I find this application, minor variances, complies with the zoning bylaws, and therefore, I'm moving it for approval with the forestry conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. Someone to second that motion? Ms. Sankar seconds. All those in favor? That motion carries. Mr. Romano, your application's been unanimously approved, subject to urban forestry conditions.
Thank you kindly. Appreciate your kind attention. Enjoy your afternoon.
Thank you, sir. Item number 13, 142 Strath Allen Boulevard. I have one person registered to speak. That's David Bronskill, the agent. Are you there, sir?
I am, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Bronskill, you have two variances before us. I note in your file that there were no comments from staff or any recommended conditions. There's two variances, one for floor space index and one for west side yard setback. Is there anything that's, I think it's pretty clear what you're asking for? Is there anything in, that you'd like to tell the committee that isn't in the material that we have before us this afternoon?
Mr. Chair, given the timing, I'm happy to address any questions or any concerns that members of the committee have. We did submit a covering letter dated March 16th. The tried to set out the rationale for both the density in the side yard that came in through the applicant, Mr. Zagdansky. I would hope that has set out our rationale, and I won't repeat it here. But like I said, I am happy to answer any questions or address any concerns that members may have.
Thank you, sir. I'll just ask the committee, does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, could I get a motion on this application, please? Mr. Kidd?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe this application is minor and meets the four tests for minor variance under the Planning Act. I'd like to put forward a motion to accept the application.
No conditions?
No, oh, yeah, no conditions.
Someone to second, Mr. Hunt seconds. All those in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Mr. Bronskill, your application's been unanimously approved without condition.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. We're now on item number 14, 117 Laurentide Drive. I have one person registered to speak. That is Bamdad Baghdadi. Are you there?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Yes, I'm here.
Yes, sir. Could I get your full name and address, please, sir?
Yes, my name is Bamdad Baghdadi from BBA Design Studio, 18 Somerset Way, Unit 213 in Toronto.
Okay, thank you, sir. I had, there's a number of reports on file here. There's an urban forestry report, which initially recommended refusal because there was the potential impact on a city-owned tree. It turns out that city-owned tree was removed some time ago, so that's no longer an issue. There's a transportation services report dated the 18th of May. They have no objections to your application. But there is a staff report dated the 18th of May, which recommends refusal. And that's, I guess, with respect to the second driveway on the property. So they're recommending that your application be refused. So in view of that, I think, sir, would you like to defer the application to discuss this further with planning? Or would you like to proceed today?
I would like to proceed because the planning report was mainly based on the forestry.
Sir, what I suggest, pardon me, what I suggest you do is give the committee a presentation on what you see as the merits of your proposal, specifically with respect to city planning's comments.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon, committee. What you're proposing, as you have before you, and I wrote a report to the committee explaining what our intentions are, is basically giving more character to the east side of this property, which is the front. The front door is lost, and no one can see it. The planning is, their major concern was that tree. And I think their base, report is based on that tree, which fell down last year. And so that tree is removed, and there shouldn't be any problem with that tree. Also, they're mentioning the amount of hard surfacing. As per the zoning bylaw and the notice of zoning before you, we do not have any variance for the landscaping. And actually, we could have 300 square feet more of hard surface and still comply with the landscaping. But that's not the intention. Our intention is simply replicating what is in this neighborhood with traffic department actually acknowledge and quote from the traffic that our proposal is consistent with the neighborhood condition. And when you look at the street or walk by a street, what our mind perception is from the street is what we see. When we see everything in harmony, and that's pleasure and favorable to the eye. So what we are proposing is basically the same driveway as our neighbor's has. And we have all our neighbor's signature in support of our application. The forest, you also have no objection. And this is simply for a quick pickup-drop-off access from the street so people can drop off packages or children to the house and pick them up later on without going, without having to go to the side of the house, which they have to climb up the stairs, especially in the winter, which is very hard and dangerous. So that's the intent of this application. And the driveway is just enough for one car to park, pick up, and drop off, and leave.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? Ms. Sankar?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. I'd like the applicant to address the fact that staff really does mention this sort of second driveway. Multiple driveways do not reflect the character of the neighborhood. And that's one of the tests that we have to sort of prove here. And that's why they're really recommending refusal. It's because of the character of your driveway and the numbers of entrances or what they deem as multiple driveways, which is not permitted. So they're saying it's not meaning the character of the neighborhood. What do you see?
Thank you. Well, the character of the neighborhood is mainly infill houses. Our property is a corner house. Between our two driveways, which one is existing and one we are proposing, there are ample side yard grass area, so they're too far apart from each other. So when someone drives by or walks by, this two driveway is not going to be hard to the eye. I know people, when they walk, they don't see the property lines. They see what they see on the street, not knowing that how many driveway this property has. This are just on the paper that we see the lines and the property lines and so on. So again, what you're proposing, I think, matches the neighborhood and matches our site, the next-door neighbor also. I mean, if you can put up my presentation that I sent to the committee as a report, it has bird's-eye view pictures of our adjacent neighbors showing circular driveway right on the north side of us. So we are mimicking the same look. So from the urban escape and urban design point... So from the urban escape and urban design point of view, what you're proposing is in line with the neighborhood and the traffic department actually acknowledged that.
Okay, just to follow up with, on Ms. Sankar's question, sir, how many circular-type driveways that don't lead to a garage, which is, which is, uh, essentially in the front yard? How, how many of those are on Laurentide Drive? Did you count them?
I, I point out a few circular driveways, but, uh, they're all, uh, lead to a garage. This is just an access to the front of the house.
Yeah, okay. And, and how, how, how many of those are there on Laurentide?
The circular driveways?
Yes, just circular.
There are many.
Circular driveways.
Yeah, there are many. I, uh, I sent a report to the committee. I hope, um, you received. Yes, thank you. With the properties with circular driveway, right our next-door neighbor at one-one-nine Laurentide Drive. And, um, actually, I can, uh, give you the exact addresses that I sent to the committee, uh, with circular driveway. Just a second.
Cause I, I think what, what Ms. Sankar was trying to get at is, is that
Yes.
Are, are these a significant num- uh, number of, are there a significant number of circular driveways in the area that would be considered
Yes.
characteristic of the neighborhood?
And, and on the Laurent?
And what I'm seeing from you, from your data is maybe three or four out of the dozens of properties that are on Laurentide Drive. Is that correct?
Most, uh, many corner properties actually have circular driveway, which I put it on the report. Also, our neighbor just next door have a circular driveway, which we are mimicking their, what they have. So again, from the street escape view, we are not damaging the character or the look of the neighborhood. And there are many, um, corner properties on Laurentide Drive that they have a circular driveway, which I sent, actually, it's in my, on my report that before you right now.
Okay, thank you. I'll just, uh, does the committee have any further questions of the speaker? Mr. Kidd?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, just, just so I'm clear on this application, uh, the, the existing driveway on the, uh, south side of the house is to remain i- i- in addition to the circular driveway?
That's an existing to the origin. I mean, the original house had that driveway on the south side. But the main entrance of the house is on the other side. If you see the site plan, it's, um, hmm, uh, many steps we have to go up to get to the kitchen and private area of this house. So to access the main door of the house, which is on the east side, we have to park the car on the side and climb up the stairs to go into the house. Our intention is to just pick up the elderly people on the front of the house and to drive back and park on the south side on the existing, uh, driveway part.
But my question was, is that, is that the existing driveway is to remain?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Because it leads to the garages.
Mr. Hunt, you had a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I just want to, uh, talk briefly about, as a follow-up to Ms. Sankar's comment about, uh, characteristic of the neighborhood. Uh, you've identified some circular driveways. But how many of those circular driveways are simply for, uh, dropping people off, uh, and not leading into a garage? Therefore, not requiring a separate garage access?
None.
None?
Yes, but again, our intention is not to park on this driveway. It's just for, to facilitate people to get in the house and leave the house as a quick parking, temporary parking. Maybe five minutes or less.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does the committee have any further questions of the speaker? Can I get a motion on this application, please? Ms. Sankar?
I through you, Mr. Chair. You know, I've listened to what, uh, the, uh, agent has explained. I understand what he's saying. I saw the proof of the circular driveways, but what still rests, um, not certainly with me. And even though transport has no objections to this, but, uh, you know, the staff is talking, the staff report is talking about multiple driveways. And that is what is deemed uncharacteristic to me of the neighborhood. And based on that test, I'm going to refuse this, um, application.
Thank you, Ms. Sankar. Summon the second Ms. Sankar's motion. Mr. Hunt seconds, all those in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Sir, your application's been unanimously refused. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number fifteen, three eighty-two St. Clement's Avenue. I have two people registered to speak. I have the agent, Ali Shakiri. Are you there?
Yes, sir. Ali Shakiri, three twenty-six Shepherd Avenue East.
Yes, thank you, sir. I just, I note with your, uh, going through your file, I note that there's only one comment from staff. That's recommended conditions, the standard conditions from urban forestry. I note that we have one other person registered to speak on this application. So if you'd like to, uh, give us a presentation on the, uh, what you see as the merits of the four variances that we have before us today?
Uh, I actually wish to request a deferral for this case. Um, uh, I was informed by my client that they wish to make some changes and those changes might affect the list of variances. As such, I wish to, uh, request the deferral.
Okay, thank you, sir. I'll just, uh, check with the other speaker I have here. I have a Catherine David No- uh, Catherine or David Nolan. Are you there?
I am here, yes. Thank you.
Yes, madam, the, uh, applicant has requested a deferral. I guess he has to make some changes to his application. Are you, uh, do you object to his deferral?
Um, I suppose, because you wouldn't be making a decision regardless. So, um, I guess there's no point in me making my prepared notes.
No, because he, uh, if he has to make changes to his application, there'll be a brand-new application will be circulated to you. And you'll have the opportunity to comment at that time again.
Okay, so this one is off the table totally then? Is that what we're saying?
It, it, I would expect, madam, that it has to be modified, in which case it's being modified and that modification and the, the resulting variance, modified variances will be circulated to you again.
Okay, all right. I'm fine then. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Shakiri, thank you. I'm just going to put the motion to, uh, committee. I have a motion from the, uh, applicant to defer the application to discuss it further with staff. Can I get a motion, please? Mr. Khan?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, at the request of the applicant, I, I have moved that this application be deferred. Signed, die.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. Someone to second Mr. Khan's motion? Ms. Sankar seconds, all those in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Sir, your application's been adjourned to the next available meeting so that you can have, have the opportunity to, uh, modify your application. I also suggest that you, uh, meet with your neighbors on this application as well. Okay, thank you, sir.
Indeed. Thank, thank you.
Item number sixteen. I have
Yes.
three eighty-eight Ruth Avenue. I have the agent, Tony Zhang. Are you there, sir?
Yes, yes, sir.
Sir, I wanted to ask, uh, I have, there's one file on recommendation. There's one file, one, one, one staff report on file with your application. That's from City Planning. It's dated the seventeenth of May, twenty-twenty-one. And I just wanted to let you, I don't know if you've read this, but they're, they're recommending that, uh, variance one for the proposed building length and variance number seven for the proposed east side yard setback. They're recommending that both those variances be refused. Now, in view of those comments, sir, would you like to, uh, defer the application to discuss it further with planning? Or would you like to proceed with the application?
Yeah, we'll, uh, we'll, uh, uh, proceed with the application.
Okay, sir, I have one other person registered to speak. So you'll have to make, uh, if you could give a presentation to the committee and, uh,
Yes.
give us the justification for your variances. Specifically, I'd make, make reference to the fact that you have a planning report that's not supportive. So you should, uh, keep that in mind when you're making your presentation.
Oh, okay, yeah, sure. Uh, good afternoon, uh, Chair and, uh, committee members. Uh, my name's Tony Zhang, uh, Promont Consultants. And, uh, the address is one twenty North, uh, one twenty, uh, North Finch Drive, suite thirty-five Toronto. And, uh, this application is to propose the construction of a two-story addition uh, to the front and a two-story addition to the rear of the existing building. Uh, in conjunction with other interior and exterior alterations. Related with the, this proposal, we found that the building length and the, and the inside setback need to be approved by the committee and together with some, uh, five others items. Uh, first, uh, we receive a support from, uh, our, uh, direct neighbors, three of the direct neighbors. And, uh, I believe the, uh, uh, it's, uh, this, the letter is uploaded to the, uh, to the file. And, and correspondent with this file, we know that the North, North York Planner Director John Andreevsky provide a start with report and, uh, City Councilor John Fielding and show his support. And, uh, they, they are in object to the number, to the request numbers one and number five, which about building lands and the side are setback respectively. Uh, let's go to some details of, uh, Mr. Andreevsky's report. Uh, we, we, we start with his objection on the building lands first. In his conclusion, he wrote, "A review of committee, uh, decision within the surrounding area found that the proposed lens is not in keeping with the prevailing methoding and skill of proved development." But he followed with that. Although committee has approved increased building lengths within the surrounding area, a staff found that proposed building lens is not consistent with the prevailing physical character of the building in the neighborhood and exceeds, exceeds the skills of, of development contemplated in the zoning bylaw. But, uh, we still find that his report is not so convincing. I have, I have to point, uh, on the building length. First, Mr. Andreevsky's report is not consistent and lack of integrity. People would ask, having approved increased building lands in the neighborhood, why should we, why should not the committee approve on this property? And, uh, I hope, that's our hope, that committee should work based on fairness. My second point on the building land is that furthermore, in the neighborhood, we found there are four houses with building lengths ranging from twenty-three to thirty-three meters. And you can find this one, uh, uh, so the building length was, uh, was measured on the zoo, on the city zoning map. And there is a four and, and one, one of them is in the, just the, across the, across the street. The neighbors, uh, uh, number three nine-one Ruth Avenue. And, uh, and house length is twenty-four point seven meter. And let's discuss about the side yard setback. And, uh, uh, so the side yard setback and there's, uh, uh, I believe there's, uh, uh, we, I have three point to talk about it. According to the current city by law, current city is wide zoning by law, one point eight meter side bike is correspondent with a frontage of eighteen meters to twenty-four meters. Whereas the house is three A A Ruth Avenue.
Summarize, please?
Yes. Well, so the frontage of the house is three A A Ruth Avenue have a frontage of eleven point seven four meters, which is the most narrow lot on the street. The side yard side bike would be
Sir, thank you.
zero point nine meter.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, just as a matter of a question, sir, with respect to variance number seven, which is one of the variances that planning was recommending refusing, which is the east side yard setback that you were requesting at one point one-five meters, when, and you should have one point eight. Is it correct
Yes.
that that east side yard setback of one point one-five meters, that's the setback for the, that exists for the current building that's on the lot? Is that correct?
Uh, sorry, I didn't call it, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? Being none, I'll go to the next person on the list. I have a lady named Helen. Are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Yes, can I get your full name and address, please?
Helen G., three ninety Ruth Avenue. So I'm at the east of the property. That's in discussion.
Okay, thank you, madam. If you'd like to give us your thoughts on this application?
Yeah, so, um, I, I, I don't ha- I, I, I support this. Um, we're all close neighbors and we'll be, uh, we'll be friends as well. So, um, I just want to show my support, uh, on this call as well. There's two points I wanted to make. Um, one is the back setback. So on the same street, uh, none, none of the houses have the same setback. There are a couple, uh, houses, uh, like we've shown before in the image that have a different setback as well. Um, and also the east setback, that's also a discussion, uh, up for discussion. Uh, I'm okay with that because my driveway is just beside it, so it doesn't affect me in any nature. I don't think these two items would, um, be special for the, uh, neighbors', uh, character for the entire, um, in the, uh, larger neighborhood. So, um, that's two of my points. And overall, I support this application. I think it makes sense since the east setback is inheriting a history of what it, what is existing, um, on this property at this point.
Okay, thank you, madam. It's good to hear. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? Could I get a motion, uh, could I get a motion on this application, please? Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Uh, I've, I've, uh, reviewed the documentation that the, uh, applicant has provided. And I believe that there is, uh, sufficient similarity to other owns in the area. And it would, uh, meet, uh, the test of being appropriate to the neighborhood. So I am going to move, uh, approval of this.
There are no other conditions, Mr. Hunt?
No, there, there aren't. Okay, so I would approve it without condition.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Someone to second that? Ms. Sankar seconds, all those in favor? Opposed? Mr. Kidd and Mr. Khan, okay, that motion is tied. I'll support Mr. Hunt's motion. So this, this, uh, this application is approved, uh, without condition. Sir, your application's been approved without condition. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Item number seventeen, one ninety-two Sheldon Ray Boulevard. I have two people registered to speak. And the agent is Vanessa Fong. Are you there?
Hi, yes, Vanessa speaking.
Yes, hello, madam. Can I get your full name and address, please?
Yes, it's Vanessa Fong, um, architect and agent for the owner at eleven Watkinson Avenue, Toronto, Ontario.
Okay, thank you, madam. Uh, going through your file, I note that there's only one staff report on file. It's from urban forestry and recommended standard conditions.
Correct.
We have one other person registered to speak on this property. So if you'd like to, uh, make a brief presentation on what you see of the merits of your, uh, three variances?
Sure. Um, so we are asking for the three variances. Um, they are one to the extension of the rear deck, the depth of the deck to three point five meters, an additional point eight meters, um, in building length and an FSI of zero point six five. Um, there are no other variances being triggered in terms of height or, or anything. So, um, and I think similar to, I think, the previous, uh, application on Sheldon Ray, which is our actual neighbor, um, point point three, which is allowable, is actually, would only allow for like one, one-story house essentially in this neighborhood, and it is quite an eclectic mix of typology within the street, so you have a lot of kind of modern builds, as well as old Tudor Arts and Crafts homes. But we have worked extensively with planning and have worked through a lot of, a lot of the concerns with planning, and they have sort of given us the okay in terms of the variances that are before us. Um, I think, I think these are quite minor in nature and, and sort of meet the, meet the four tests in terms of the character of the neighborhood in the streets as well.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, madam, I'm going to, does the committee have any questions to the speaker? Being none, I'll go to the next person on our list, I have a Brian Wolf, are you there, sir?
Yeah, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, sir, if you'd like to give us your thoughts on this comment, your thoughts on this application? Mr. Wolf, are you there?
Hello?
Yes, Mr. Wolf, are you there?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, can I get your full name and address?
Uh, it's Brian Wolf, two twenty-seven Sheldon Lake Boulevard, Toronto, Ontario, and Port P two B one.
Okay, if you could give us your thoughts on this application?
So I'm a resident across the street, as mentioned similar before on the other house that went before, I had to go through the committee a number of years ago, and it just seems there's a fair amount of creep on the size of these houses, point six five percent coverage versus point three five, certainly in no one's mind is minor. Again, this is a large box of a house that goes up to the, I guess, the four corners of what a box could be built on a property within the three feet of the side, the back and the rear, and it's going to tower and pose upon the houses beside it. If you want to build such a structure, then there's to take down the height a little bit and make it not so imposing. Um, I don't think this is a typical example of a house, there are other houses on the street that are similar, and there are certainly good examples of what fit in with the neighborhood and other ones that don't fit. It'd be nice if the committee listens to the neighborhood, I'm one of the neighbors, and it's sort of would be reflective of what other neighbors in the area speak of.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does the committee have any questions to the speaker? There being none, I'll go back to the agent, Ms. Vong, are you there?
Yeah, yes, speaking.
Yeah, madam, do you have any comments for Mr. Wolf, if you'd like to reply?
Sure, respectfully, Mr. Wolf mentioned the height and, and I assume kind of like the mass of the building and it towering over the neighbors, however, I do want to point out that we aren't asking for any height variances, we are, we are within our allowable kind of envelope in terms of height, so that isn't a variance, that is, is on, on the, on the application today.
Okay, thank you, madam. Does the committee have any questions to the speaker? Could I get a motion on this application, please? Mr. Kidd?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I think the proposal meets the intent and purpose of the bylaws. I'd like to put forward a motion to accept the application subject to forestry condition.
Thank you, Mr. Kidd, someone to second that, Mr. Hunt seconds, all those in favor? Motion carries unanimously, madam, your application's been unanimously approved, subject to urban forestry.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Item number eighteen, two ninety Empress Avenue. I have one person registered to speak, that is the agent, Moran Hadari, are you there, sir?
Yes, sir, good afternoon again, my name is Moran Hadari ten nineteen hundred zero two five oh six.
Okay, thank you, thank you, sir. I, going through your file, I note there are two staff reports on, in that particular, in your file, one from Transportation Services dated the eighteenth of May. Their report has no objection to your driveway location. The city planning report of the twentieth of May indicates they appear to have no objection to your application, provided the proposal is constructed substantially in accordance with the west and east elevation drawings submitted to the committee is attached as attachments one and two to their report. It's pretty clear in your application what you're asking for, sir, so I'm just going to ask, is there anything that you'd like to tell the committee that isn't contained in the material we have before us this afternoon?
No, nothing to add, and thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does the committee have any questions to the speaker? There being none, could I get a motion, please? Ms. Sankar?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I motion to approve this application and make it subject to the conditions that you have read out in the staff report, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sankar, someone to second that motion? Mr. Hunt seconds, all those in favor? That motion carries unanimously, sir, your application's been unanimously approved, subject to city planning conditions.
Thank you so much, good afternoon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number nineteen, three twenty-two Empress Avenue. Oh, pardon me, three twenty-two Empress Avenue, item number nineteen. I have one person registered to speak, that's Bill Ross, are you there, sir?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Ross, just going through your file, I note that there are no recommended comments or recommended conditions from staff. It's, you have, you have four variances before us, it's pretty clear what you're asking for. I'll just ask, is there anything that you'd like to tell the committee that isn't contained in the material that we have before us this afternoon?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Does the committee have any questions to the speaker? Could I get a motion on this application, please? Mr. Khan?
Thank you, sir. It's a minor variance and we've seen intent of the zoning by law, therefore, and there is no staff recommendation, I move that this application be approved.
Okay, thank you, sir. Someone to second Mr. Khan's motion? Mr. Hunt seconds, all those in favor? That motion carries unanimously, sir, your application's been unanimously approved without condition.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Item number twenty, one oh four Lexfield Avenue. I have three people registered, two people registered to speak. The agent is Murat Ozgur, are you there?
Yes, sir.
Yes, hello, can I get your full name and address, please?
Okay, good afternoon, Mr. Chair and committee members, my name is Murat Ozgur, and my address is eleven Cassidy Place, Toronto, Ontario.
Okay, thank you, sir, I noticed there are a couple of reports on file with your application, there's one from Urban Forestry dated, which says no, which is standard conditions. City planning has a report of the fourteenth of May of this year, they have no objection to your application, provided that you eliminate variance number two for the proposed height. Were you proposing to eliminate that variance, sir?
Yes, sir, we are eliminating number two.
Okay, so let me just get this clear, so go to... So variance number two, which right now you have is...
This was because of the slope of the roof, normally the height is ten meters, but because the slope is changed and the maximum height goes to seven point two meters, we changed the slope and we eliminate the number two.
Hang on, just a, just a second, sir. Variance number two, the proposed height, the variance reads proposed height is nine point nine two meters, you're proposing to delete that, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you, sir, I'm sorry, I didn't, I was a little behind there. We have another person registered to speak, sir, so if you could give us a brief presentation on what you see as the merits of your revised application?
Sure, yes. Number one, the, you know, per maximum lot coverage is thirty-five persons of the lottery, we are asking thirty-five point four. Number two, we eliminate. Number three is the minimum front yard setback, which is eight point five meters, it should be, but we are proposing seven point eighty-two meters, which is exactly right now the existing house setback. Number four is the minimum required side yard back setback is one point eight meters, and we are asking for the north side, one point fifty-five meters. And also for number five, it's again the side yard setback, one point eight, that should be the required minimum side yard setback, and we are asking one point five meters for the south side yard setback. And in the neighborhood, there's some examples of the setbacks, which is such as fifty-two Lexfield Avenue, and they have a setback of one point twenty-nine and one point nine, one point zero nine, sorry, and also one forty-eight Wellington Avenue, they have also a setback of one point thirty-seven, so in this area, this type of setback is very common. And as per the city planners' report, there's no objection about this, only the number two, which was the, like I said, the maximum height of the roof, which is because of the roof slope, be eliminated, so we're gonna, we changed, I will present the revised plan, so it's, it should be fine, we will be in the limits of the zoning by law.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does the committee have any questions to the speaker? There being none, we'll go to the next person on the list, I have Danielle or Rosa Arena, are you there?
Hi there, hi, it's Rosa, hello?
Yes, hello, can I get your full name and address, please?
Sure, it's Rosa and as well Dan Arena at seventeen fourth.
Madam, madam, we're having, we're having trouble hearing you. Do you have any other audio devices turned on, turn them on, just speak into your phone?
Is this better, it's on the computer?
Still hard to hear you, do you have, do you have? Do you have?
Hello?
Yes. I can hear you.
Okay, so... Okay, there's no other device on, I'm just working from the computer.
Yes, can I get your, madam, can I get your full name and address?
Sure, it's Rosa and Dan Arena, seventeen fourth present.
Okay, thank you, if you'd like to give us your thoughts on this application?
Sure, okay, so this is our first participation, so excuse, we don't have the knowledge or experience to participate, but I did want to, because our backyard is a part of what we see for the new proposed home, so I see that variance number two was our main concern from the speaker, he noted that was going to be eliminated only by changing the slope of the roof. So if someone could please clarify, in terms of the height variance, is that taken from street level to the top of the building, of the home? Because the elevation, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, madam, just to clarify, just to, we, well, the agent will get back to you and answer that question, but just to verify, that's usually taken to the, pretty much to the top of the roof?
To the top of the roof, right, but street level, because this property, Lexfield itself, it's, it's like sitting on a hill, so the elevation is very high at street level at Lexfield, but as you move towards the back of the property, it slopes downward, and, and you know, we're sitting, Fourth Fringe Crescent sits very low behind these properties in Lexfield, right, so anything that's built, we, we see like a towering building, like the lot next to this proposed building, which is Lot, Lot eighty-one is also a newer construction that was built a few years ago. So they, they tower over just for the sheer shape of the elevation of the land. So that's our concern, because right now, you know, it's open, it's very, this is a large building, so if they're just changing the slope, like, it's, it's still going to be like a towering building over our backyard property.
Okay, thank you, madam. Does the committee have any questions to the speaker? There being none, we'll go back to Mr. Ozgur, are you? Mr. Ozgur, are you there?
The building is taken from the established grade, and it's ten meters, that is permitted by law, and we are, when we eliminate number two, we are still in the ten meters, and we are not asking anything about it as a variance, so that is the height of the building, which is, which we have a right to build.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does the committee have any questions to the speaker? There being none, could I get a motion on this application, please? Mr. Kidd?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I think the proposal, as amended, is fairly modest and meets the intent of the zoning bylaws, I'd like to put forward a motion to accept the application as, as revised to eliminate variance number two, and subject to forestry condition.
Thank you, Mr. Kidd, someone to second that motion? Mr. Khan seconds, all those in favor? The motion carries unanimously. Sir, your revised, your revised application's been unanimously approved, subject to urban forestry and city plant, no, subject to urban forestry conditions.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Item number twenty-one, three twenty-two Empress Avenue. I have one person registered to speak. That is David Bronskill, he is the agent. Mr. Bronskill, are you there?
Mr. Chair, are we, item twenty-one?
Mr. Khan?
Sir, are we on item number twenty-one?
Item number twenty-one, eighteen RJ. Oh, pardon, no, I'm sorry. My mistake.
No problem.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Khan. Item number twenty-one, eighteen RJ Crescent, I have, David Bronskill is the agent, are you there, sir?
Yes, sir, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can hear you, I can hear you, sir. I just wanted to ask, there's one report, a couple of reports on file with your application, one from Urban Forestry with standard conditions, and there's one from City Planning, and City Planning is recommending that your application be refused. So I just wanted to ask at this stage, before we start, would you like to defer your application to discuss it further with City Planning, or would you like the, would you like your application heard today?
We, we would like the application heard, sir, we are aware of that report, we've had extensive conversations with City Planning, so we're aware of their concerns and have tried to provide them with some materials in support. You know, we've done our best, but we respectfully disagree, so we would like to proceed if that's, if that's still possible, sir.
Yeah, so if you could give us a presentation then, sir, you're, you're the only speaker I have on the list, so if you could give us a presentation, what you see as the merits of your proposal?
Thank you, sir.
Please proceed.
Thank you, sir, I, I do have to make a couple of quick reductions or revisions to the variances on file with you, if that's, if I could start there, sir?
Okay, if you'd like to, let's, let's deal with them now.
Thank you. Variance three, which is the permitted building length, would be reduced, oh, thank you to staff for putting that up, that's helpful, would be reduced to forty-eight point three one?
Hang on just a moment, variance number three, which currently reads the proposed building length is forty-nine point one three meters, and you're going to change that?
Forty-nine point one, yes.
To what?
Forty-eight point three one, sir.
Forty-nine point three one? No, hang on.
Forty-eight point... Forty eight point, forty eight point three one, sir.
Well, I'm sorry, thank you. Forty eight point three one? Okay.
Variance five, sir, which is the depth.
Okay.
Is reduced to 23.9 meters.
Okay, so right now it reads that the proposed building depth is 26.97. You're reducing that to 23.9 meters.
Yes, thank you, sir.
Okay, is that the changes?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you then. If you'd like to proceed with your presentation?
Thank you, sir. I was going to focus on the length, depth and, and the height variances, because they were the ones flagged in the staff report. And with the assistance of, of city staff, we do have the package in front of you. If I, I'm asking if they could bring up page three of that or page four, which is a zoomed in, either of those would help to start the discussion. Thanks very much. This shows the location of the proposed house. What's relevant, just to bring to the committee's attention on this, at the top, there are a couple of blue hatched lines. These relate to the long-term stable top of bank line and then the 10-meter buffer line. So we do have to bring the house and structure forward to meet those lines, which has been done in terms of the design. You can see a red line, which is the front yard setback. So there is a portion of the building coming in front of that front yard setback. What I would just flag for you on this as well is, you can see that the depth is, or sorry, the length is measured from a point close to the street. That's an underground portion that forms part of the garage. That's why you see a more significant length variance in terms of the structure before you, because we do have to measure it from below grade to include that excavated portion. If I could ask the staff member just to move forward one slide where we zoom in? And it's page four, thank you. What this shows is, in fact, however, the length and depth of the house itself aren't as extensive above grade. And so it's one of these cases, and if I could ask staff as I'm talking to move forward to, to slide six. What, what ends up happening is, measured from the portions of the house excluding the garage that's protruding and the one piece at the back, because it's sort of this odd shape, the actual main structure of the house is in fact 25.13 meters. That's the middle line that we're showing there. So it's only when you add on these two cubes or pieces at the front or back that we start to get the additional depth. We, we think this house, in fact, has been designed in accordance with the slope of the street and in accordance with the rear yards on either side. This can be seen on slide seven, Mr. Chair, and again, I thank staff. You can see how the rear yard, 18 there over on the far right, rear yard, we're lining up with 10, and because of the long-term top of bank and the 10 meter, we're in fact not nearly as deep as number 26. Where the house does protrude, though, is in front of the front yard setback. And we're showing the setback there at 15.9 meters to the closest point. Because of RJ's curvilinear nature and that top of bank, these houses, as they've been approved over the years, have all been pushed forward. And we've included the front yard setbacks there. 26 at 17.35, 28 at 18, 32 at 13.9, 38 at 15.37. I won't read them all for you, but that's in fact what's occurring on the slope of the street, is the staggered portion of the houses are all in fact moving closer to the street. We think we're actually in keeping, therefore, with that pattern of front yard setbacks. I would just quickly on the height, because there may be some questions on this, we've included in the package at slide eight, a comparison to the neighbors. We're in fact lower than the one neighbor on the right at 26. We're fairly similar to number 10, but number 10 RJ frankly will be, we believe, redeveloped in time. It's an older house that will get redeveloped. It certainly doesn't take advantage of any of the as of right permissions. Slide nine, we've included, just so the committee can understand, the permitted sloped roof we've shown on slide nine in red, and we're just showing how in fact, although it's a flat roof structure, it barely protrudes outside of the permitted envelope for a sloped roof house. And so staff did key in on the number, but we think in terms of massing, it in fact is very similar to a sloped roof house that would otherwise be permitted on the site.
Can you summarize, please?
I will, sir. That was the last thing I was gonna say about height. I would just also note, our client has canvassed many, many neighbors on the streets. Those letters of support, I believe, are on file with you now. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about what we believe to be frankly qualitatively a house that fits in as in keeping with other approvals in the area. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bronskill. I note that there's one, one other person who's just recently signed in to comment on your application, so we'll go to him next. But does the committee have any questions to the speaker? There being none, I'll go to this, the next person. I have a Bill Zhang. Are you there?
Yeah, I'm right here. Can you hear me now?
Can I get your full name and address, please?
Yep, my full name is Hong Zhang, and then I'm the immediate neighbor, 26 RJ Crescent.
Okay, if you'd like to give us your thoughts on this application?
Yep. Perfect. So good afternoon, everyone. I have to really have to oppose and object the new dwelling, the construction at 18 RJ. Well, I'm the immediate neighbor, and the following reason are shared by my architect friend, who is also a licensed architect, graduated from University of Toronto and has multiple practice in the city of Toronto. And then I have also initially a sign up list on some of the immediate neighbor near 18 RJ Crescent, that some of them, I have minimal time to contact the other neighbors, but if I do, I believe many of them will stand by my opinion. So I really wish the architect and the neighbor to reconsider their proposal and repropose a new design that does not extend over the permitted outline and the permitted height. So, so for the reason why is, the, the first reason is that post-new dwelling, I feel like is extend over beyond the terminal outline and then, so the shadow that will cast on the front yard of my house will be extremely bad. And then from the report from the, of the C A staff that he stated also, the reduced front yard setback would create a condition in which the proposed dwelling would project at least 9.82 meters part, the, part the front wall, past the front wall of the neighbor to the north, which is my house. And then planning staff are of the opinion that this will be excessive as it's the result of the proposed dwelling, that is substantially longer than the nearby dwellings in the neighborhood. And then as of the height, I just listened from the, from the architect himself, he said the, our, the building itself is lower than ours, but then however, the top of the roof of our house is actually not, is actually empty. So basically, the building itself is a, and then stated also in the report, the, the height difference for the sloped roof and compared to the flat roof is different. So by the way, the, the roof on there, the flat roof on the 18 RJ new construction is still over the extension, over the, over the, the allowed height. And I think that will also create a very compressed ceiling once I, at my house, because the house is right next to ours. And then is, our front yard basically is the new construction, is their new construction. So, and then also we do require, I think, the, the, the house is gigantic. And then from the, for the, for the, for the house to be able to be construct, I think the house need to, or the architect also indicating, we need to be digged down at least 10 feet deep. And then also that the house is okay that is slow as of mine. So I'm worried that the, the digging will, will cause soil, soil movement and then eventually leads to financial loss, losses to my property. So that's what, that's my main worries and I don't think this will, my neighbors and I approve this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does the committee have any questions to the speaker? There being none, we'll go back to Mr. Bronskill. Mr. Bronskill, are you there?
Yes, thank you, sir.
Yeah, did you, you heard the comments from Mr. Zhang?
I, I, I did, sir. And at, at risk of repeating myself, I mean, part of his complaint is in fact with the curvilinear nature of RJ Crescent. His house protrudes and is 17.35 in terms of his front yard setback. His house has a front yard setback variance. Our house at the closest point is proposed is just under 16 meters. So almost any house, because of the top of bank, is gonna protrude with just the way RJ curves and functions in terms of the front yard setback line. So I don't think it's reasonable to say that he can have a house that protrudes, whereas our client at 18 can't have a house that protrudes. I don't think that's a reasonable or fair position. And we have also included among the materials in front of the committee, photos of the extensive tree landscaping that exists between 26 and 18. With all due respect, you can't even see between the lots today. He's gonna come out of his house at 26. Thank you. That showed the existing. Thank you to staff. If I could see 14 and 15 as well, it'd be appreciated. There's down the street and then 15, coming from the side, this is in front of 26 at 15, you'll be able to see back to all of, that extends all the way back to the houses. So there's just no visual sightline, even if it wasn't justified to have the house protruding in front, as all the houses do on this, on this street. I've also provided the comparison earlier, that 26's house is in fact taller. So I don't think this is gonna be a looming massing whatsoever. And I've already given my arguments earlier to you, Mr. Chair, that the, the length and depth, which has been approved, for example, on, on Old Colony at 49 meters, is below grade. The, the significant massing here is only 25 meters in length, if you take out those cubes at the front right and back left of the house. So overall, we actually think it's been designed sensitively. We do see some of the form letters in opposition, Mr. Chair. I do have a concern, because we've got one signed by 31, whereas our client has a letter of support from 31 across the street and took the plans to see that neighbor. So I'm not quite sure what the form letters in opposition at this late date mean, when our client has gone and spoken with people and showed them the plans and had 31 sign a letter of support. So overall, sir, I, I do think while the numbers to staff may be something that concerns them, as we've seen, the house deployed and masked both on the street and on the site, we do think it appropriate and respects and reinforces that pattern in the neighborhood. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, of course, I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bronskill. I'll just ask the committee, does the committee have any questions to the speaker? Okay, none. We'll go into committee if I could get a motion on this revised application. Please note that variance number three has been changed. The proposed building length is 49.13 meters has been reduced to 48.31 meters. Variance number five has been revised. Currently reads the proposed building depth is 26.97 meters. That has been reduced to 23.90 meters. So if I could get a motion on this revised application, please?
And, and sorry, Mr. Chair, it's, it's Mr. Bronskill. My apologies to the committee. I should have said, if the committee sought to approve it, we would recommend a condition that would require construction substantially in accordance with the site plan, because we would not want the below grade length depth to apply above grade. I, I think this committee has heard me recommend that condition before, and I would recommend that condition again.
Okay, thank you.
Apologies, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, so Mr. Bronskill would also like to see a condition imposed that the, the building is constructed substantially in accordance with the, the plans submitted to the committee. Hang on. Mr. Bronskill, do we have, have you submitted revised plans to the committee?
Yes, sir. They're in the package as, as one example, Mr. Chair.
Okay, you may want to, may want to make sure that those, those plans are, are submitted. Well, hang on just a second, Mr. Bronskill. We're gonna put them up and make sure they're correct.
Mr. Chair, there's a site plan in the package dated May 27th, 2021, that shows the length at the 48.31 meters.
Okay, and this, and it also shows the, the revised dimension for variance number five?
Correct, sir.
Okay, all right then, thank you. Can I get a motion on this revised application, please? Mr. Khan?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chair, although Mr. Bronskill has modified variance number three and variance number five, but they are still more than the allowable, and therefore I'm still sticking with the recommendation made by the staff, that this application be refused. Although T R C A has in their letter, no, no objection of May 1921, but I am taking variance number one, three, and four, and five, and 10 as still excessive than the allowable, and they do not comply with the intent of the official plan and zoning bylaw by massing of building that does not maintain the character of the neighborhood. It's not minus, minus variances. Therefore, I refuse, I move that this application be refused.
I have a motion for Mr. Khan recommending that the variances be refused. Are you, and someone to second that motion? Mr. Kidd seconds. All those in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Mr. Bronskill, your application has been refused.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate the committee's time.
Thank you. Now on to item number 22. 44 Craigmore Crescent. I have one person registered to speak. Michael Taylor, the agent, are you there, sir?
Yeah, I am. Hear me okay?
Yes, hello, sir. Can I get your full name and address?
Yes, my name is Michael Taylor of Taylor Design Services.
Sir, can you speak up? We can't hear you.
Oh, okay. Can you hear me now?
It's a little better.
I'm on a, I've got a mic.
Okay, that's better.
I'll just reposition it. That's better? Okay, good. Michael Taylor of Taylor Design Services, and my address is 3465 Willoughby Terrace in Oakville, Ontario. And I'm the agent for the owner.
Thank you, sir. As going through your file, I note that there's one staff report on file with your application. It's from city planning dated the 17th of May. They have no objections to your application, provided the proposal is constructed substantially in accordance with the west elevation drawing submitted to the committee of adjustment, attached as attachment one to their report. You have two variances before us, sir. It's pretty clear what you're asking for. They're both related to side yard setbacks. I'll just ask, is there anything you'd like to tell the committee that isn't in the material that we have before us this afternoon?
Only that the, 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 the staff report accurately reflected what material I had given them, and it seemed very positive. Just one, one thing was in the supporting material from May 25th. Just a series of photos, just the very first photo, and it just further reinforces what's actually there. And the side yard between the two houses is not used to access either house, and as you can see, it's used to store recycled bins.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does the committee have any questions to the speaker? There being none, could I get a motion on this application, please? Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to move approval of this application and make it subject to the planning staff recommendation that it be developed substantially in accordance with the west elevation drawing submitted to the committee of adjustment.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Someone to second that motion? Mr. Khan seconds. All those in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Sir, your application's been unanimously approved, subject to city planning conditions.
Thank you very much. Have a great afternoon.
Thank you, sir. Item number 23, 34 Edinburgh Drive. I have one person registered to speak. That is Stephen Lindy. He is the agent. Are you there, sir?
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the committee.
Thank you, sir. I, going through your file, sir, I note that there is a couple of reports on file. There's a recommended condition from urban forestry, the standard stuff. Transportation services and. Transportation Services in their report of May 19th has no objections to your application, provided that you add a notation to the site plan drawing stating that you're closing existing site driveways that are no longer required and restoring the soft landscaping and full concrete curbs to their satisfaction. So the report from city planning dated the 17th of May has no objection to your application, provided the proposal is constructed substantially in accordance with the site plan and north elevation drawing submitted to the committee, as attached as attachment one and two to their report. Have you had the opportunity to read those reports, sir?
Yes, we have.
Okay, thank you, sir. It's pretty clear what you're asking for in the five variances we have before us. I'll just ask, is there anything you'd like to tell the committee that isn't in the material we have before us today?
The only additional material would be that we have two more letters of support that came in just after the deadline, so we provided those to the technician, but they didn't make it into the folder.
Great, thank you very much. Committee have any questions of the speaker? Can I get a motion on this application, please? Mr. Kidd?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe the application is minor and meets the four tests for minor variance. I'd like to move to approve the application, subject to the condition, planning staff report dated May 17, that the proposal be constructed substantially in accordance with the site plan, north elevation drawings submitted to the committee of adjustment, attached as attachment one and two to the planning staff report, also subject to the transportation services condition that the applicant add a notation to the site plan drawing stating that all portions of the existing site, access driveways that are no longer required, must be closed and restored with soft landscaping and full concrete curbs to the satisfaction of the transportation services, and finally, subject to forestry condition.
Thank you, Mr. Kidd, someone to second that motion? Mr. Hunt seconds, all those in favor? That motion carries. Sir, your application's been unanimously approved, subject to urban forestry, city planning, and transportation services conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the committee.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we'll now break for lunch, take half an hour. Half an hour, we shall...